And you guys are live.
Thank you, Jody. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to our first work session here at the Montauk Library for the meeting of May 14th. Carol, if you could, I was just looking that way. Carol, if you could please read the roll call.
Councilmember Flight.
Present.
Councilmember Leece.
Present.
Councilmember Rogers.
Present.
Councilmember Callapimont.
Present.
Supervisor Bert Gonzalez.
Present. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so before we start, we are so excited to be back in Montauk for the Town Board Work Sessions for the first time in over four years. I looked it up. Our last meeting in Montauk was March 10th, 2020. It was important to our administration to restart this practice after pandemic restrictions had made it difficult to continue. We are thrilled to be able to offer residents of Montauk an easier way to connect with their local government. The energy and spirit of this community is unmatched, and we cannot wait to hear from our residents on how we continue working together to improve our town. We would especially like to thank the folks from the Montauk Library, Library Director Denise DiPaolo, IT Technician Britt Manser, and the Library Board of Trustees. Thank you as well to the folks at LTV, Michael Clark and Jason Nowor. I have to say, Britt and Jason are the real VIPs. They're the ones that made this all happen and got the equipment installed. And finally, thank you to our town staff, especially Heath Liebman and Nancy Seraphin and the team in IT so this could hopefully, knock wood, run seamlessly. So we start today's meeting with public portion. We kindly ask you to keep your comments to three minutes. Folks here in the room and will be calling in with comment. We have nine topics on our work session agenda. We've got bids with Jeannie Carosa, Living Shorelines RFP with Samantha Klein. There'll be an update and action plan for the Summer 2024 Beach Season with the Beach Advisory Group. Melissa Winslow will be giving us an update on South Lake Montauk, South Lake Montauk Park Revitalization Plan. We will also have a Town Board Discussion after the hearing on the Water Quality Technical Advisory Committee's RFA for Round One. We'll get a presentation from the Surf Rider Foundation on Skip the Stuff. Alice Cooley will be making a presentation on 180 and 184 Soundview Drive Zone Change. And Rob Connolly, our Town Attorney, will be presenting draft legislation for Chapter 255 zoning, alternate members for ZBA and ARB, as well as Chapter 2 Access to Public Records. That'll be followed by liaison reports, and then we all have a few resolutions. So we're going to start with public portion, and the first person signed up is Andy Harris. Welcome, Andy.
Thank you, Supervisor Bert Gonzalez, and thank you, members of the board. My name is Andy Harris. I'm a resident of Montauk, and I'm thrilled to see the Town Board reinstating the monthly meetings here in Montauk, second Tuesday of each month. We all remember the Town Board meetings at the Firehouse. We're thrilled that you're taking wonderful advantage of the library space, the Susan Gossman Community Room, which is a wonderful resource to the Montauk community. Again, as you indicated in your opening remarks, I'd like to thank the library themselves for making this available and LTV for broadcasting from Montauk. We're thrilled. Thank you all.
Thank you, Andy. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to address the board? Jody, is there anyone on the line calling in for public comment?
Yes, caller ending with 8764. You're on the line?
Good morning, Town Board in Montauk. This is David Buddha. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. I'm just calling to express some concerns because there seems to be some changes that Mr. Connolly will be presenting to you with regard to his request for you to consider changes to the Chapter 2 Access to Public Works, essentially dealing with FOIL requests. But my concern is that you all should all understand that there are many, many routine administrative requests that could and can and daily are handled by your very competent departments. Every professional that has work in this town, whether it be an attorney, engineer, an assessor, I mean, an appraiser, a tax grievance consultant, and many other types of professionals have to deal with and submit requests for documents in the ordinary course from your town departments, and they receive them in almost all instances in a timely manner. Oftentimes, responses are either at nominal charge or for free if they are emailed in accordance with the provisions of the FOIL law. You had a prior draft. I'm looking at what you have posted for consideration for today's meeting, and I think Mr. Connolly has made some further changes. I'm not sure if I'm catching it all. The last proposal was a subtle suggestion that all FOIL requests be directed to the Attorney's Office instead of to the Clerk's Office, which would have been really cumbersome, unreasonable, unnecessary. You really have to make a distinction between FOIL requests that are going to be handled by the town departments versus, and if you have eliminated the Town Attorney being the recipient of FOIL requests, that's wonderful because that was totally unworkable. I do note that the proposed change is from the current code, the officer of the town that is responsible for dealing with any appeals for any partial or total denials of access is to be proposed to be changed from the Town Attorney's Office, where I think it should stay, to the Town Supervisor. Obviously, the Town Supervisor is not a legal scholar, and such decisions really involve the application of legal principles and precedents. I think the Town Attorney's Office can and should remain as the Appeal Officer for purposes of any denials. So again, I just want to make you very sensitive to the fact that a tremendous number of requests for public records are submitted by the public, members of the public, whether they be laypeople or professionals, and they're handled on a routine basis by the administrative staff. And I think that there is really reason in the state statutes for denominating the Town Clerk as the official repository and person responsible for town records. I don't think you can change that, and if you are proposing to change that, I think you need to check with state laws whether or not the Town Clerk must remain as the official person in charge of all town records, even if its responsibility is delegated to different department heads. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Jody, is there anyone else on the line?
There are no other callers on the line.
I'll ask one more time in here. Is there anyone that would like to address the board? All right, so we'll move on to topics. We have our first topic, and that is bids with Jeannie Carosa. Welcome, Jeannie.
Just a few items today. The first is the acceptance of the bid for the supply and delivery of Ford OEM parts. Newans Bay Shore Ford is the apparent low bidder for that. Few extensions. First is T-shirts, sweatshirts, and other uniform items. ABC Custom Sales has agreed to extend their contract. Also, we have mowing at the East Hampton Airport. Suburban Maintenance and Landscaping has agreed to extend their contract, and they do two mowings over the, I guess, summer season at a cost of a total cost of $14,444. We have the extension of the specialized bus services from Montauk, and that's with the Hampton Hopper. The dates for this service go from June 27th, which is the Thursday before the Fourth of July, and runs through Labor Day. The total number of days is 68 days, and the total cost of that is $164,594. And we'll be noticing one bid. This Thursday coming up is the printing of miscellaneous forms. And lastly, the RFP was done for the professional services for the Living Shorelines in Montauk Wildlife and Resilience Improvements, and Samantha Klein is here with that recommendation from the evaluation team. And that's it.
Great. And you mentioned the Hampton Hopper, that service is returning like we've done it for the last number of years.
Quite a few years now.
We're using the same route, following the same route as we had years ago. Beautiful. Thanks, Jeannie. Samantha, if you could please join us and present the Living Shorelines RFP?
Okay, great. We're in business.
We are all good. Yep, so I'm here to give an update on where we are with the Town of East Hampton's Living Shorelines project in Montauk, which is that there was an RFP issued, and an evaluation committee reviewed all the proposals and deliberated and came to recommend to hire DNB. So that's our group's recommendation. But I know it's been a while since we've talked about this project, so I figured I'd give a little bit of background and start there. So this is a part of the town's efforts to advance recommendations in the Coastal Assessment Resiliency Plan, referred to as CARP. So CARP has a bunch of different recommendations that came out of a hazard risk analysis. So it kind of shows that there's not a one-size-fits-all solution to making our community more resilient and that we have to do a multi-layered approach of pursuing many different projects at once. So one of those is doing a natural or nature-based solution that can preserve and even enhance our natural resources. With the various projects in mind from CARP, we were keeping an eye out for different available grant opportunities. So to have a competitive proposal, we needed to both have a strong project as well as match the goals of the awarding agency. So Living Shorelines was a good fit for this particular opportunity through National Fish and Wildlife Foundation. The grant under them was the National Coastal Resilience Fund. So Living Shorelines, they can reduce erosion, mitigate flooding, improve habitat, and improve water quality, and provide wildlife benefits. They can look very different depending on the site and what's compatible and suitable for that area and what the goals are. So they might include submerged plantings that go landward. It could include an oyster reef or a mussel reef, but determining what this living shoreline is going to look like is going to be evaluated by the consultants that we're hiring through a scientific assessment and biological review. So our project partners on this are Cornell Cooperative Extension Concerned Citizens of Montauk and the Montauk Chamber of Commerce, as well as several departments within the town. So all these organizations have been a part of previous resiliency efforts, as well as having technical expertise in these areas. Cornell Cooperative Extension, they do living shoreline design, so they're a good partner on this, that they have that exact experience and kind of keep an eye out for those things. CCOM and Montauk Chamber of Commerce, both of them have great ties with the local community, so we're really going to be looking to them for advice on outreach efforts and making sure that we're choosing a project that's compatible with what the community members want. And they've also been members of other town committees that relate to this type of work. Within the town, we have the Purchasing Department, Natural Resources, Finance, as well as Aquaculture. So we have a good mixed team looking at all of this. And just definitely want to give credit where credit is due. Everyone on this project has already donated a really significant amount of time. We had great news that we received eight proposals for this RFP, so that's a pretty high amount. And it was definitely a big ask to ask everyone to be a part of the review process. I was a little nervous about it, but everyone was actually super excited because that meant we got to be picky about who we were going to pick and really compare the different proposals. So we all independently reviewed these and then got together and deliberated. Three teams were shortlisted for interviews, and out of that, we definitely think that all the teams that applied were extremely qualified to do the work and had previous experience, but DNB kind of rose above the others. They have prior experience working on different living shorelines. Their subcontractor is First Coastal, which did important work on FIMP, which was a project located in Montauk, and they have the prior work experience, and they also definitely have already spent time looking at what they want to propose to do with these living shorelines. So for this work plan, it's to get us from zero to 60% design completion. So that starts off with the project scoping and citing, which I have a slide on next, as well as site assessments, biological assessments. So that's looking at erosion rates, wave modeling, and the alternatives analysis is looking at different options for what these living shorelines can look like and which is the best option for here. There will be public meetings as well as a pre-application meeting with the permitting agencies, so that way we know that we're on the right track to get something that will actually be shovel-ready and implementable by getting the right groups involved early on. We think the appropriate time for public meetings and community outreach is probably in the zero to 30% design phase. That would be where people really have an ability to express what they think would be a good project, but it's far enough into it at 30% that we'll have some ideas. So that way, it's coming to the table with kind of a rough idea of what the options are that people can give feedback on. And then it would be modeling and 60% design. So that would be the closed deliverable of this phase of the project is getting to the 60% design. So citing considerations. So in the original grant application, we selected South Lake and Montauk, so that partners well with a project that's going to be discussed later today by Melissa Winslow. It's a part of a bigger effort going on in that area to really look at stabilizing the shoreline through this project, as well as water quality improvement efforts happening more landward. The other site location is in Fort Pond, so originally, we had proposed in the application doing it by Second House, so kind of near that floating dock pavilion. We have since, DNB actually suggested, they looked at the site as a whole of if we were looking at different areas of Fort Pond, and they actually suggested possibly moving it to the northwest portion of Fort Pond. There's a road there on Second House and Industrial that the water is right there. Like, you can see it very close. We've had a lot of heavy rainfall events. It becomes kind of a very apparent area for some project to help stabilize the shoreline there. So they are actually suggesting that maybe we look at doing it in that location instead of our original location. So I wanted to bring that up today and kind of just float that out there and see if there are any initial comments or reactions to that. Yep, and so the immediate next steps here are really just if there was an approval, an agreement to take the evaluation committee's recommendation to hire this particular company, and then we would go into contract with them and begin project with a project kickoff meeting, and that would be starting the work plan.
Any questions, discussion?
Yeah, just one question. I know we had looked and explored about doing a bioswale in that area as well. Would this interact with that, or would that be a separate kind of entity?
So the one in South Lake, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the South Lake project is definitely going to be complete before the Living Shorelines project is because we're just in the design phase for the living shorelines, but we're hoping that the projects really complement each other, that it would be absorbing all that stormwater before it enters the water and causes these water quality concerns. And the living shoreline could kind of be a nice partner to that, doing vegetation to help build out the shoreline a little bit, looking at public access, though, and making sure that, you know, it's still, people are able to use the recreational resources there. But we do think that they'll partner with each other.
Great. And then just in terms of kind of what they're thinking on the industrial road project itself, is that, can you give some more detail on what they're thinking there, or is that still to be scoped out?
So it's still to be scoped out quite a bit. Kind of the difference in the thinking of the two sites is that the one site that's further south originally was identified because that's an area where a breach is a concern. So severe flooding to a major road access in and out of Montauk. So we thought an effort to build out the shoreline there, reduce erosion, absorb some wave energy would really be critical. In talking to the consultants, they kind of offered this other project that because of the other location, it is pretty away from the road already. So it would be kind of a frag removal project with the living shoreline component, whereas this other site location, the water is immediately adjacent to the road, so it could potentially be more beneficial and high-profile in that sense.
Thank you.
So for myself, I want to thank you for bringing on John Dunn. John Barley Dunn is the Department Head of Aquaculture. A lot of this will be subsurface also. As far as South Lake, most of what you'll hear from South Lake is more seaward than the dune line on there. But to bring him in to make sure that any habitat that would be increased there, such as shellfish, would be harmonious to our local shellfish. As we know, the town shellfish hatchery is out here in Montauk, it's been here for about 45 years, in about an 85-year-old building. And Tuesday, they do good work there in a very antiquated building. Second, you want to make sure on the northwest side of Second House Industrial Road, there's RIDEC permitting over there for road improvement area then too. So that location, you would want to make sure that either works together or is separate then too. And I can get you more information about that, too.
Gotcha.
But overall, I'm supportive of this, and congratulations on the grant then too.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Sandra, the diligence on this and to the whole reviewing committee. I think you did a great job on this. I am supportive of the project. I understand the new location. I just want to emphasize, you know, when we say living shorelines, that this is a project. It's a lovely terminology, but it's really important to erosion control and flooding and for coastal resiliency in the future. So it sounds like, you know, a lovely name, but I just want to emphasize the importance of the function of what you're going to be working on.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm supportive as well, and I look forward to the design phase and seeing what comes of it. But it's very exciting, and I think would certainly have applications beyond these projects, you know, if it's successful.
So will you have the resolution on to hire DNB on Thursday night?
Yeah.
All right, beautiful.
Okay, all right, great.
Thanks, Sam. Okay, so next up, we have the Summer 2024 Beach Action Plan with the Beach Advisory Group.
Madam Supervisor, thank you very much, and Town Board members. I want to bring up to the podium Chief of East Hampton Town Police, Mike Sarlo, Department Head of Parks and Recreation, John Rooney, Senior Harbor Master, Tim Treadwell, and Chief of the East Hampton Town Lifeguards, John Ryan Jr., if you don't mind. You know what? You can bring that to me if you want. Can I work that from here?
Yes.
Chief, can you just bring that to me?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
David's showing off.
The guinea pig here. Even before I want to start, I want to thank Denise, Executive Director of the Library. The library is not just doing the community a wonderful function today about bringing our meetings back to Montauk, but the library is also hosting every Monday, the first Monday of the month, the Montauk CAC meetings, which many members are here right now. So it's a wonderful community building. If you haven't used it, use it. You can go upstairs and just takes your breath away for a moment in time in a very, very busy life that we all have. So I want to thank you for the multiple meetings that you run. If you have questions about it, please reach out to the Montauk Library and their Board of Trustees. So thank you. Thank you all for being here. We wanted to make sure, as Memorial Day is about a week and a half away, we wanted to come up with, express to the board, as we've done about the last four years, the Summer 2024 East Hampton Town Beach Action Plan and our future recommendations. Let's see if this works. Thank you. Okay, the Town's East Hampton Town Beach Parks and Recreation Advisory Group, myself, the council member, we have on there Chief Michael Sarlo from the East Hampton Town Police, John Rooney from the East Hampton Town Parks and Recreation Department. He's the Department Head. Anthony Littman, who's the East Hampton Town Buildings and Grounds Department Head, he will stay on with us. We also will be bringing on Steve O'Brien as he transfers into the Department Head role next week. East Hampton Town Marine Patrol, Tim Treadwell, who's Senior Chief. East Hampton Town Chief Lifeguard, John Ryan Jr. East Hampton Town Buildings and Grounds Department Crew Leader, Valan Moosley, and also the Clerk of the East Hampton Town Trustees, Francis Bach. Also on advisory capacity is Ed Michaels, East Hampton Marine Patrol, Jeff Thompson, Amagansett Lifeguard District Chief, Haley Ryan, Amagansett Lifeguard District Assistant Chief, John Ryan Senior, who's just Big John, and he's the Lifeguard Program Coordinator. Barnaby Friedman is the Chief of the East Hampton Volunteer Ocean Rescue, James Pinkott, East Hampton Town Capital Projects Manager. Our mission in response to the unprecedented worldwide health emergency in March of 2022, the town, sorry, that's 2020 I meant to say, declared a state of emergency for the Town of East Hampton. Above-mentioned advisory group was convened upon request of the Town Council to consider the use of the township's beaches, parks, and recreational areas in light of the COVID-19 virus, make recommendations on the safety use of the public bathing beaches during lifeguarded and recreational facilities opening hours. Post-pandemic, which we are currently in right now, the Town Council continues to support the advisory capacity of the Beach Advisory Committee, and we meet on a regular basis. Our 2024 Beach Action Plan includes recommendations for lifeguard beach operations, East Hampton Town Lifeguard safety protocols, developed conference station operating and custodial protocols. The 2024 Suffolk County Beach Operating Permits have been received, applied for and received, and continued efforts to maintain needed staffing levels for all departments, continued coordination between agencies and town departments to carry out the town's 2024 operational plans and policies, and also newly, the assessment of the downtown Montauk Beach and Surf Zone post the beach infill. We'll be touching on all those very shortly. I'm going to bring to the top Chief John Ryan Jr. to discuss some of the recommendations for guarded beach operations. John?
Thank you. Thank you for letting me come and present here. East Hampton Town Recreation Department is preparing for the lifeguard season. We are opening up Memorial Day weekend starting on May 25th, and Beaches, Indian Wells, Ocean Beaches, Indian Wells, Atlantic Avenue, South Edison, and Ditch will be open from 10 to 5. As far as our bays are concerned, Big Albert's will be open again for weekends only until mid-June, and that'll be open from 10 to 5. As far as continuation of the summer, as of June 15th, Maidstone, Gin, Bay Beaches will be open, as well as Motel Row, and also additional wing stands in Montauk and in Amagansett.
Can you just explain what a wind stand is, John?
10 to 5. Say again?
Can you just explain what a wind stand is?
Yeah, wing stand are, some beaches, because of the large population of beachgoers, we have to, Suffolk County requires us to only cover 50 yards, all right? We obviously cover a whole lot more, but because of the numbers of people that are outside that protected area, we have to put out wing stands at some of the beaches that are heavily populated. So Indian Wells, for example, has two stands. Atlantic Avenue has three. Kirk Park has one wing stand. It's to the east of Kirk Park. And then there's, South Edison has two stands as well, one for the west of South Edison, so we're covering all of Montauk, Motel Row. And then Ditch Plains, because of the population, we have two stands there. All Bay Beaches have one stand. As far as recommendations for the guarded beach operations, we're continuing to coordinate with the East Hampton Town PD, Marine Patrol, as well as East Hampton Volunteer Ocean Rescue. We, over the years, have used, the last four years, have used drones to help with the lifesaving needs, surveillance and monitoring of possibility of dangerous marine life. We want to keep the public aware of this. And then we've also used, installed ADA mats at Indian Wells, Atlantic Avenue, and there's actually a mat at South Edison that's for drive-on purposes as well. As far as preparing and educating the community, we are, our Nipper Guard and Junior Lifeguard programs have grown tremendously. The enrollment is, for Nippers, just for qualifying, is 155, and the Juniors right now is 450, who have been coming every Sunday since March to the YMCA, where we have lifeguards working with them to make sure that if they are in our program, they are qualified to be in our program. It's quite an undertaking. If you want to see something... quite an undertaking. If you want to see something crazy and madness, come visit us on 1 o'clock to 2:30 at the YMCA, and you'll be surprised at how many kids we're working with. We also have Tous. Chief Treadwell started Tous last year, which is Town Open Water Swim. That's for the adults. All right, that want to build their confidence and open water swimming skills. We are continuing our lifeguard training courses. We're running from 2:30 every Sunday, 2:30 to 4:00 at the YMCA. Still water training. Right now, we're at enrollment of approximately 40. And we have our ocean training beginning Memorial Day, Tuesday, the Tuesday after Memorial Day, which will bring just as many people looking to get ocean certified. And then we will continue to use ATVs to guard our beaches and to keep the public informed. Also, an outreach campaign for residents about beach conditions. You can go on the town website, go to beaches or recreation, either one, and you'll see beach conditions on there. Click that, and each day, the lifeguards will update that, that site to tell you what the conditions, the ocean conditions are, temperature, surf conditions, whether it's a red flag, green flag, or a red flag, yellow flag, green flag. Green means safe. Green means go. Yellow means caution. And red means danger. In addition, we also will tag, as we monitor, whilst we travel down the beach, we will also, if we recognize a rip current in a certain area, we will put that on that advisement page as well. So it's a day-to-day thing. Also, I want to thank David, David for putting this on here. The International Water Safety Day, this is my simple commercial. We want to educate our community. International Water Safety Day is going to be at the international, at the Amagansett Lifesaving and Coast Guard Station on Atlantic Avenue, 160 Atlantic Avenue. It will bring dozens of water safety organizations together with interactive activities, arts and crafts, and a wealth of water safety material. I hope all of you can join us. It's pretty amazing to see what everybody is going to be doing to try to encourage and help to create a water safe community. We will have refreshments, prizes, and a wealth of education to help waterproof this community.
Johnny, could you give us the date for the International Water Safety?
Oh, yeah, sorry. That is this Saturday. Hopefully, you cleared your calendars. So continuing on.
John, what time is it?
Oh, sorry. 11 to 2, 11 to 2, this Saturday, May 18. This is our third annual. And it looks to be good weather. So new, new beach conditions post Fire Island to Montauk Point Project, with respects to the beach infill, we were a little concerned after that heavy storm that hit, took away some of the beach, a lot of the beach in Montauk. But as I always say, it's, it took it out. It took it out beyond the break, made a nice sandbar, and then it kind of put it back. So Mother Nature was very kind to us. But we are working on groups, our group, our working group has convened to address lifeguard procedures post Fire Island to Montauk Point Project infill. Because of the girth of the beach in Montauk, which is absolutely amazing, from when I was first lifeguarding 44 years ago, the beaches look like they were back then. We are, we are, we are preparing and are expected to see a large volume of beachgoers. That's okay. We are ready and prepared for that. Back on, the back of the beach will be used for emergency lanes. We will set up an emergency lane to keep people, one, off the beach fencing, as well as keeping them forward on the beach so that we can, in the event of an emergency, we have the ability to travel. Marine Patrol, Lifeguards, PD have the ability to travel the back of the beach without fearing anybody getting in the way or hurt. Morning beach trash runs in Montauk are staffed and will be implemented. Temporary sand, sand grade beach entrances, entrance points are at South Emery, South, sorry, South Embassy and South Edgemere. Instead of the stairs going down, there's, there's sand, sand grade entrance points.
If I can just add to that, Johnny. So that part of the Army Corps project is that that is predicated on public access to the beaches. These are temporary measures. I thank Buildings and Grounds for helping myself and others install these locations. We will be putting mobbing mats on that. They're part of the FEMA, the Fire Island Russia's inlet project on those three locations. The other two vehicular locations already has, have their matting there then, too. So that's where the public can still access the same locations. As far as the courage structures that have been accorded off, those discussions are upcoming still, everyone with Army Corps, and specifically the non-federal partner, the DEC. Thank you, John.
Sure. As mentioned, the drones, drone technology is being used at Montauk as well. We will be enforcing and advising and enforcing the no dogs on the beach and no smoking during lifeguarded hours. And then one of the things I would like to just mention that has come under, well, it's come up at USLA and other beach agencies that are dealing with this. We're, we're, we're going to be advising and enforcing the whole digging holes on the beach. A lot of people don't realize the dangers in the holes. A sand collapse, a hole collapse can cause serious injury, if not death. And we saw it down over spring break. An individual was killed due to a sand collapse. So we are going to be advising that no holes should be dug any deeper than knee-high of the smallest person in your group. And at the end of the day, they must fill it in.
Thank you very much. And just to go back to downtown Montauk, the advisor group that was convened is looking at cert conditions because there's a different profiles on there. We're also prepared for the extra equipment that might be needed to make larger areas for our lifeguarded, not protected areas, lifeguarded stand areas and such on there. We don't think it's going to be produce challenges. It's everything that Johnny Ryan and the staff is prepared to do. So last thing I want to say also about East Hampton Town Lifeguards, which are some of the best, the best lifeguards in, I will go New York State, is that we are constantly hiring. So if yourself or anyone would like to work for the town of East Hampton on the lifeguard in the back bays or on the ocean beaches, please contact Chief John Ryan, Jr. He'll get you the information then, too. Thank you very much, John.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Johnny.
I'm going to go on the Buildings and Grounds. And John Rooney, if you want to come up, maybe if the board has any questions, I'll go through these mostly. With the Buildings and Grounds, there's a large amount of effort involved to get the town's facilities ready for 2024, as in every year right now. Anything from electrical, plumbing, painting, all, all the way through. John, John Rooney has been tremendous help recently with the beach rules, directional informational signs. Do you want to go through the next couple of bullet points, if you don't mind, John?
Yeah, the staffing levels are sufficient to deal with the increased workloads of summertime for repairs and anything that needs to be done at all the, at all the beaches. The morning beach trash runs in Montauk have been staffed, or in the process of being staffed at the moment by Buildings and Grounds. Beach rakes are also being all set to be deployed starting next week.
And those rakes will be also in Amagansett and in Montauk, but they're on alternating days. And the beach rakes, pretty much is the large vehicular machinery goes on the beach very early in the morning. Part of that also is making sure that we enforce beach fires, which will come up next in the presentation. Thank you, John. Keep going.
Custodial staff, there also has to be increased for the summertime, and that's in the process of also happening as well. I believe the bathrooms at the beaches are either open by now or during this week. So all those will be available. There are Wi-Fi networks being installed at select different beaches around town, security cameras as well, at different comfort stations and parking lots. And the beach, going back to the beach comfort stations, they're going to be closed at night and then reopen early in the morning. So not going to be open overnight. The other thing to add that Johnny Ryan had before is that you could now enroll online for the summer programs that Johnny was going through. So they're all available to the public right now. So you can go in and start getting set up for the summer.
Thank you very much. One of the reasons why we will be closing the bathrooms, the last, at nighttime, opening early in the morning. This is like closing at 11 at night, opening at 4:00 and 5:00 in the morning, or such through coordination efforts. It's because of vandalism. Every year, there's a tremendous amount of vandalism. The committee recommended this to the Town Board. The last couple of years, Town Board supported. We would like to continue doing that. Also, what's happened now is we are increasing security cameras in many of our comfort station locations. In talking with Edward Schnell, they're all prepared to come online very, very shortly, if not already. So we should be ready for the summer season, part of a public safety campaign that the Town Board has supported through Capital Projects. Thank you very much. Chief Treadwell and Chief Sarlo, if you want to come assist the next one, maybe?
Good morning. Thanks for having me. And first of all, I'd like to thank the Town Board for your support. The, one of the bullet points here is my level of staffing. And I really appreciate the fact that we've gone from a, you know, low of three harbor masters, including the department head, to now six, including myself. And that's huge. That allows me to run a deeper schedule, and a, and a better schedule, and a more efficient schedule. So that's very appreciated. So when it comes to the late night patrols, because of the new staffing, we should have no problem staffing minimum 2:00 AM weeknights and 4:00 AM on weekend nights, which should help with the beach fire enforcement. One of the biggest problems we do have with the beach fire enforcement is even though we go around and we check almost every beach fire and try to talk to the public about the beach fires and ask them how they plan on disposing of their debris, often after we drive away, midnight comes, we can't be everywhere at midnight when the fires are supposed to be out, and they end up dumping the debris on the beach. But, you know, we do our best to educate the public on to the best way to remove their debris from the beach. Anyways, as far as the level of communications, I'm also extremely happy with that. You know, our, my relationship with the lifeguards and parks and buildings and grounds, if we see something on the Marine Patrol, like a road end or something that's eroded, you know, I call Tony, and I'm looking forward to working with Mr. O'Brien and meeting him, because Tony's usually right on it, you know, gets on it, fixes the problem. And that's hugely helpful. With the police department, of course, you know, we're dialed in with them. Anytime we need assistance, we can always call on them for help, and they can do the same for us. The Town Attorney's Office has been hugely helpful in, you know, clarifying some stuff in the code, which makes our enforcement efforts easier. And also, John Rooney's signage has made our enforcement efforts easier because, you know, it's, it's, you know, pretty simple when somebody's complaining about you giving them a ticket, and you say, well, it's right there on the sign, sir. There's really not much that they can say. Anyways, so our staff levels are sufficient. I think that's really pretty much all that's on those bullet points. You know, we also are excited about getting a new boat in June. You know, I, our, our amount of time of boat patrols has also increased over the past few years. We've gotten more, more boats out at more appropriate times. Usually, you know, the peak period seemed to be in the afternoons, you know, not so much in the mornings, of course. And we've been successful getting boats out at those times and hope to continue to do so.
Can you elaborate, Tim, where, where you're on boat patrol?
Where we are?
Yeah.
Sure. Well, I mean, basically, I have to have two crew for a boat. So, so, so we try to get at least a boat out every day, east or west, either in, in Montauk Harbor or Three Mile Harbor. And then on weekends, a boat in Three Mile Harbor and a boat out in Montauk. Of course, that depends on staffing levels, weather, all of those things. But in general, you know, I'll have a, I'll have an eight to six tour and a 12 to 10 tour, you know, as a, as the backbone of the tour. So then, because I also have to have an officer east and an officer west. So that way, when, when the, when the noon patrol comes on, I can send a boat out, and then, and then, and then that boat comes back before 6:00 usually. So the next boat goes out. Yeah. But, but we also do special enforcements, you know, dusk patrols, sunset patrols, MSD enforcement details, where we check sanitation devices. We work with SAG Harbor. We do that with SAG Harbor. We do Operation Drywater with the Coast Guard, which is a BWI task force event at least once every season, if not twice. Did that answer your question?
That's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Sarlo, do you have any comments?
Thanks, Tim. Just, just very briefly, the level of cooperation and communication that was born out of this during COVID is essential to keeping track and maintaining some sort of level of oversight of our beaches during the summer. They are the highest level volume of congregation of people at any one point in time throughout the township. And, you know, with 70 miles of shoreline, it's essential that each one of these agencies communicates properly and stays on top of the safety enforcement, monitoring, everything that goes into it. It's a huge undertaking. I really appreciate your support, the board's support, and each of the department heads in collaborating on these meetings to make sure we all understand the needs and how to go about helping this function as best we can during the summer season. It's really a tremendous improvement from where we were a long time ago. And I think it's one of those positives that was born out of the emergency of COVID, that we need to make sure we continue to push forward. We'll try to do some PR campaigns heading into the summer season, along with the town, to really push out and make sure our visitors understand the beach fire regulations, parking permit regulations, event, special event permit on the beach regulations. Essential is that we make sure the community understands our lifeguards are kind of in control of their swimming in protected areas. There's actually sections of the town code where you must obey by the directions of a lifeguard. And we're trying to work with Johnny and his people to make sure that they get enough training to understand that they can direct people with a dog out of the lifeguard protected area, that they can help us get out in front of some of the minor violations, which may be causing an inconvenience for, or, you know, a safety issue for the people who are in those lifeguard protected areas. Very challenging when you cram that many people into locations. And, you know, I really appreciate everyone's support, and we're looking for hopefully a safe summer.
Chief, could you just elaborate? I know sometimes when folks see something on a beach, rather than call, you know, 537-7575, they send us an email.
Right.
And it's not something we can address.
So there's a couple of things that we'd like to try to push out as we head into the season as well, is we really are, we're trying to work with our partners in the village in emergency and fire and rescue to limit 911 calls. You know, someone having their dog in the swimming area is not a 911 call. And we really want to try to free up our 911 services for what those essential needs are to respond to emergencies. So we want to continue to do some public service announcements regarding appropriate use of 911, so that we can increase response time, limit call volume, and make sure that our resources are being directed efficiently. We don't like, none of us in a position of enforcement, whether it's members of the Town Board or any of these department heads, like getting an email on Monday morning that this happened and you didn't do anything about it. So if you email us and you take the time to send us a picture of it, we'd rather you call 537-7575, and our dispatchers will either get Code Enforcement, Marine Division, Police Department, Parks and Rec, somebody there to rectify the situation while it's ongoing, not just to take a picture of and say, ha, ha, you didn't do your job. That doesn't help us fix the situation in real time, which is what our goal is. 70 miles of shoreline, if we have two or three Marine Patrol officers on, getting to all those beach fires, checking those beachheads, responding to fireworks calls, dogs on the beach, truck with no permit, we can't be everywhere at once. And we rely on the eyes and ears of the community. We appreciate the support. We ask for those things to be phone called in in real time to our main desk and let our dispatchers decide which appropriate agency they can send to respond.
Great. Thank you.
You got it.
And I just want to also point out that Chief Sarlo, Harbor Master Treadwell, John Rooney, and John Ryan, John and Harbor Master Treadwell, they, they also come to our Special Events Committee. Chief Sarlo and John Rooney are two members, along with the Fire Marshal, Francis Bach, and others who also coordinate the vast amount of special event permits and special events that we have on our beaches and throughout our town. So you bring this valuable knowledge to that committee as well in helping us make safe decisions. So I thank you for that, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
And Johnny, I'd like to invite you back before 4th of July to come and do a presentation just to talk about, you know, water safety for those folks that can't make it on, on Saturday. Talk about the, you know, the flags. Talk about what to do in a rip current.
Be glad to.
It'd be great. Yeah. That'd be a wonderful idea.
I just have one or two just follow-up things. And one is, John, I'm knowing, I talked to David about this, too, but the assumption is, is that the downtown beach is going to be significantly more popular this year, given its enhanced kind of condition. So staffing levels may be increased as to what they've been before there to kind of cope with that, I'm assuming. The other one is for John Rooney, actually, it's kind of more about, and Tony. I know in past years, trash has been a major issue. We have the bins there, but as Chief Sarlo kind of called out, there is a vast number of people who use those beaches. You know, one thing just to the public, use those beaches. You know, one thing just to the public generally is, is that the best policy is a carry on, carry off policy where you bring that garbage home with you. If you do see the garbage cans overflowing, again, contact the town to get those dealt with. We don't want garbage building up and ruining the beach environment itself. And the last one for John Rooney was, we talked a little bit about the disabled access beach mats in Indian Wells, et cetera. In Montauk, we also have wheelchairs for disabled access to the beaches as well. Could you just talk a little bit about how people can go about accessing those should they need them?
Yeah, very simple. They can contact our office or they can email our office and they'll get myself. And we'll, we'll end up contacting them with Johnny Ryan and letting them know where they can, if they need to make, like they know they have a date coming up in the future or whatever. But we always have the, at all the guarded beaches, when the, when the beaches are open and guarded, we have availability of those beach wheelchairs and the guards will be happy to assist them. But it's great if we know ahead of time so we can pre-warn them and then they're ready to greet them and help them out.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay. Just quickly finish off with the 2024 town trustees. The clerk of the trustees, Francis Bach, is on our committee. Again, I mainly think he wants to let the community know that the trustees are going to continue to work with the East Hampton Town Agencies on enforcement and nighttime activities and fires will be monitored, specifically poaching, which we saw in the last three or four years. But now that we've had new restrictions put into the poaching, that's been highly monitored. They're continuing to increase their capacity for the kayak racks for users. Please contact the town trustees on that. And also, the town trustees have their pump out boats. They've increased the volume to the great efficiency of the new boat. They have locations both in Lake Montauk and then also in, in Three Mile Harbor. Tim, do you want to come up and just let everyone, anyone know if they needed their pump, their boats pumped out? Who to contact for that?
Sure. On the VHF, you, you can hail the pump out boat on channel 73. That's the best way to get ahold of them. There's not a, sometimes, once you make contact with the pump out boater, pump out boat operator, depending on who it is, that individual may give that customer their cell phone number. But the general policy is channel 73 on the VHF. And they're open seven days a week, both Montauk and Three Mile Harbor over the summer season. There was a slight delay in the opening of the pump out dock in Three Mile Harbor because it's a new pump out, it's a new tank, and there was a, a problem with the valve. But that should be up and running shortly.
Thank you very much. And lastly, to the board members, ABC, please swim near a lifeguard. Be respectful of others, particularly on the beach, and always, let's just be for that. And clean up your litter as a council member, Flight and I was just mentioning. And with that, I want to thank everyone. And if there's any questions from the board members, we're, we're, we're here.
Do you have any?
I don't have any questions, but I just also want to say thank you. Obviously, the beaches are incredibly important. Thanks to Dave and, and all of you. It's good to see that you're so on top of everything.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, everyone.
Okay. So next up, we have Melissa Winslow, making, giving us an update on South Lake Montauk Park Revitalization Plan.
Thank you.
Welcome, Melissa.
Good morning. Just one moment while I figure this out. I think I've got it. There you go. All right, you're in business. So I'm Melissa Winslow. I'm a principal environmental analyst in the town's natural resources department. And I'm here to give an update on the South Lake Park Revitalization Project, which is currently underway. So just a little background, this is a former public bathing beach. It was closed in 2005 and has remained closed since that time due to water quality concerns. So that kind of brought this to the top. The Water Quality Committee prioritized this out of our Water Quality Improvement Plan to move this project forward. And it's great to see that it's, you know, finally getting installed. So this is an aerial from 2022, showing the previous site conditions. The parking lot has a lot of impervious surfaces with no real parking delineation here. So we kind of saw it as an opportunity to make better use of the space. The vegetation on the site is primarily invasive species. So we want to try to get more native plants in there. There's two comfort stations, or there were two comfort stations on the site. A composting toilet, which is, was not really used, was installed many years ago. And then the existing comfort station, which is utilizing a conventional septic system. There were no stormwater controls or mechanisms in place and no usable storage space for boats, kayaks, or bikes.
And the composting one has been removed also for the project.
Right. Yep. So this is the existing site condition concept plan, just to kind of lay out what the design goals that were developed with the engineer that was hired through RFP to design this project. We were working with PW Grosser and LaGuardia Design, who helped us with these engineering designs. So we really wanted to focus on improving stormwater management on the site. And you kind of see these callouts that I'll get into a little bit more detail in a second. Reconfigure the existing parking area and reduce the impervious surface area and then enhance pedestrian circulation and use of the site. So, working with our engineers, they put together these concept plans of kind of outlining our design goals and how to solve those. So Part A was incorporating a dry stream bed to control stormwater runoff before getting to Lake Montauk, reconfiguring the parking area, new pedestrian circulation and seating area to make the site a little bit more usable for residents and visitors, and then installing a new innovative alternative septic system, as well as removing the composting toilet that was not needed anymore. So this is kind of just a zoom in of the dry stream bed, which is basically a rock lined swale that can capture and infiltrate stormwater and reduce erosion. So that was one of the focuses. And then you kind of can just see some photos of natural vegetation, dry stream bed, and pedestrian crossover. We also kind of reconfigured the parking area, included 13 parking spaces delineated, including handicap accessible areas, impervious or permeable parking pavers in the front with head in parking so people can just come down and look at the water if they choose. And then a little bit more organization with the bike and kayak racks. And then lastly, kind of just a zoom in of the comfort station, upgrading that to an innovative alternative septic system, which kind of partners well with some other work that has been going on in the area. The residential property owner just to the east has upgraded through our septic incentive program. And then we've also awarded RFA CPF Water Quality Funding to the Crowsnest and Faroe Beach cottages directly to the west. So kind of a holistic approach to improving water quality here. Just some site metrics. So through this project, we'll be reducing 2,500 square feet of pervious infrastructure, 20% reduction in total infrastructure, incorporating 13 parking spaces, increasing total vegetated areas by 6,000 square feet, with the total of 15,000 square feet of revegetation with native plants. And this is just the permitted design. We had to get permits from New York State DEC. And, you know, it's moving forward. Great. So just to show some photos of the site. So we installed a site, a sign onsite to let residents know that this was coming. This went in, in January, just an informational sign with the plans included. So the project began April 1st. This is the, some photos of the IA septic system installation, which has already been completed and is functional, up and running.
That's use of a shallow leaching field on the left?
Yes, yes. Shallow, because groundwater is pretty, you know, high here. So we used a shallow leaching structure rather than conventional cesspools for leaching. This is just an aerial view to try to, you know, show the delineation of the site and the use of turbidity curtains to prevent any, you know, of the sand and soil being disturbed, being, you know, running off of the site while we're incorporating some of these improvements. Just another different view.
Melissa, if you go back to that one?
Sure.
Just talking about the holistic of the global approach. Those are the cottages to the right, which are preexisting, nonconforming, upgrading their septic systems. The large restaurant just further to the west is upgrading. And then that's the house to the left.
Yep.
So within that couple hundred yard stretch of front facing to South Lake in a groundwater, travel groundwater, you know, or subsurface waters is not even a year, maybe?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah. That many, that, that much gallons per day being treated that effectively is a win for Montauk.
Right. Yeah.
And the environment.
A great use of our CPF Water Quality Funding on this area that has known impairments. So just a few more shots I have here. This was last week incorporating some of the, you know, native trees, shrubs, ground cover. I've been told that as of yesterday, the planting is complete. So they're moving on to the next phase of the project. But it's really coming together and looking nice. So you can see the dry stream bed with the pedestrian crossovers have been installed. This is the permeable pavers that have been installed. They will be resurfacing the parking lot around this and pitching the parking lot towards the dry stream bed to capture and treat all the stormwater from the site. Just kind of an aerial shot. So this is as of the ninth last week. And I think that might be it. Yep. So are there any questions on this?
Tremendous progress. When do you think we'll be ready for the ribbon cutting?
So the timeline, originally, they were expected to be completed right before 4th of July weekend. They are ahead of schedule. So we're expecting to be done a little before that. Hopefully by the end of June, maybe we can do, you know, an opening.
Just want to say thank you for doing this because I've used this beach many times with young kids especially. It's a great spot to go to, but the water quality is obviously a concern. Just a quick question about, you know, we're doing these changes. What will the water testing schedule be so we can kind of start to report on improvements in water quality we might be seeing?
So Surf Rider and CCOM routinely monitors this site, as well as East and West Creeks, which come right into Lake Montauk around this site. So that monitoring will continue. They amp up their monitoring in the summertime. So they, I believe, sample weekly. And then moving forward, we'd like to incorporate some additional projects to maybe improve the water quality of some of the creek, the water coming into Lake Montauk from the creeks because those have had in the past high bacteria levels.
So this, this project's been under design and, and for about two years now, since it's been discussed, the Water Quality Technical Advisory Committee to the town board through multiple administrations, and now it's changed. A couple of different times. One of the things I'm happy about is the test patch of the permeable pavers. The only location we've done that would be in, in SAG Harbor, on Water Street or Bay Street, excuse me, in SAG Harbor. They can be very expensive. But again, by using them effectively with the pitching of the asphalt to the location where the runoff would be, I think it was appropriate for the location here. If you go down, there's, there's a lot of shad, there's, there's, there's a lot of good, good plantings going there. It's a little bit of a hot mess if you don't get visualized.
It's a construction zone.
It's a construction zone when it comes together. I also think this might be a location for potential ADA beach matting because of the width in that, that doom line there. That might be a location.
Yeah, the topography may allow for that.
Yeah, it could work out pretty well for that. I do believe we still have a roll, if not maybe two of those, left over at town hall. So maybe, Tom, you could discuss that with Disabilities Committee overall. But it is a large project for a very quiet place. And I think people will enjoy it. One thing we have to do is we'll make sure that we conversate with Steve O'Brien and Jim Terry to make sure that the bathroom is prepared and operational since it's been closed for a little extra longer. And maybe if we need a painting, give a little extra TLC. Let's get on that now in advance.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Any other questions? I think I've been looking forward to something being done there since I was on the zoning board a million years ago. This has just been a chronic distressed area of the lake and it's really welcoming to see how far you are in the changes that you're making in that area. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. It's a great project. And honestly, I did not realize it was this far along. So it's, it's great to see and ahead of schedule is always good. So.
We were getting phone calls at the office, so I think.
Yeah, we got a few. But once people knew what was happening, they're excited about it. So.
Yeah. So, thank you, Melissa.
A little scary to, you know, just go down there and see that something like this is happening without knowing, but.
Well, it's, it's for, for our public bathrooms that surround this location, we have three of them. We have one at Westlake Comfort Station, which has been IA, the septic system's upgraded. We have this one here, IA septic system's upgraded. And our third one is at Gin Beach at East Lake. That was supposed to be done prior to this year, but the timing just got very tight. That's my liaison report, excuse me. Wait to the end. That one, we're going to push off into September, October, because we just didn't want it to interrupt the summer season. But of the town's facilities around this, around Lake Montauk, the town has taken an active leadership role in upgrading all the septic systems of those locations that we have right now.
Yeah. South Edison's actually coupled with Gin Beach as well. So that one will be upgraded.
Yeah, that's correct.
Great. Strategically going around town, upgrading, you know, all the municipal sanitary systems to IA, better treatment, nitrogen reducing technology. So.
Beautiful. Okay. Melissa, if you could now segue to, we had.
Next one.
Water quality after hearing discussion.
So, yep. Let me just get into the timeline here. So the first round of the 2024 Water Quality Request for Applications for projects for water quality funding was noticed in December of last year. The round closed February 15th. The Water Quality Technical Advisory Committee made recommendations to the town board for projects selected for funding on April 9th. We noticed the public hearing on the 18th and was heard at the town board meeting on May 2nd. So there were four projects that moved forward to the public hearings, which I'll get into a little more detail on each of those. So we're here today to have the after hearing discussion and then the town board can consider awarding these four projects funding at the next meeting.
Right.
So the first project is a commercial septic upgrade project. This is located at 177 Amagansett Main Street, owned by ROP Amagansett LLC. So this was actually a project that came to the board in previous round. There was an award and then a transfer of the property ownership. So we asked them to reapply. So here we are, you know, looking at this project again. So they have a flow of 3,240 gallons per day, so which is pretty high. It's a commercial restaurant operating as Rowdy Hall. They are outside of our water quality priority area, out of the Water Protection District, but they're in the 10 to 25 year groundwater travel time to the Atlantic Ocean. We have awarded some other projects funding in this area. So it kind of, kind of ties into those other projects. So they requested $140,625. They're eligible for 50% of the installation costs. So that equals $100,500. So the Water Quality Committee recommended funding this project and went to public hearing.
So just as a member of the committee, sorry, to the town board, as I've done in the past, I recuse myself from this application as we're a neighboring commercial property owner. So enjoy.
I'm supportive of this application. It's a failing septic system. It's a downtown Amagansett Business District where there are other restaurants, et cetera. So that, so all of these flows per day are significant. And I recommend that we award this amount. At the public hearing, there was no one spoke in opposition. And I think it's important to get this one done.
I agree with my colleague here. And I think if anything, that flow rate might go up with this new restaurant potentially being more popular than previous occupants. So I'm fairly supportive of this.
I'm supportive as well.
As am I. So if you could have that resolution on for Thursday, that would be great, Melissa.
So the next project was another commercial septic upgrade. This was Oceanside Owners LLC or Hero Beach Club. This is an upgrade to two buildings, not associated with their proposed new restaurant onsite. It's a flow of 2,195 gallons per day for just those two buildings. Expected nitrogen reduction of 275 pounds of total nitrogen per year. It is in the zero to two year groundwater travel time to Atlantic Ocean. And all of downtown Montauk is a priority area within the Water Quality Improvement Plan. So it is in a priority area. So they requested $348,909. They would be eligible for 65% of the installation costs, but capped at $200,000. So the Water Quality Committee recommended $200,000 to Hero Beach Club.
Yeah, no, I, I'm, I'm in favor of this. I mean, it's proximity to the, the ocean. We want to make sure we're treating the wastewater coming out of this facility.
So the water.
So the Water Quality Technical Advisor Committee is a recommended committee to the Town Board. It's guided in the general obligation law of the CPF, of the CPF, New York State law. What the Water Quality Technical Advisor Committee enforced, I've been fortunate to be the liaison to this committee for six years now.
Few years, yeah.
Since inception, actually, is that what the committee has done very well, it's changed when they've seen changes needed, either for the pro or to the con or to then put those recommendations to the Town Board. Initially, this application was not fundable, but the changes were discussed at the committee level, sent to the Town Board because the water quality funding is an incentivization of greater water quality needs and efforts on there. The property did not have to do this if it did not want to in the future. Property does not have to change, but we want to incentivize what is there and maintaining. And that's what the committee then recommended to the Town Board and that's why there was a change in that, that practice and that policy and that allowance on there then too.
This is an evolving process. This, you know, CPF water quality funding was just approved in 2016 to be used for this purpose and our first round was in 2019. So annually, the Water Quality Committee does a review and, you know, looks at lessons learned. Is there anything that we can tweak to improve the process? This last round of, for 2024, the committee kind of saw a clear differentiation between a project that's incorporated into a decision from a Town Board, like the Planning Board or the Zoning Board versus a project that's required to be upgraded through an order of consent through a court or stipulation agreement. So ultimately, the Water Quality Committee sees merit in these kinds of projects moving forward and are deserving of funding as, you know, try to get to our ultimate goal of water quality improvement.
Melissa, could you also talk to about the competitive nature and how you set, you know, what the, you know, the amount is going to be for each round?
Right. So this is a competitive process. We do have the septic incentive program, which is not a competitive process and kind of applications are accepted on a rolling basis for up to 20,000. Since this is a bigger bucket of money, the budget is kind of looked at on the scale of how much money, you know, did we get from the 20% of water quality out of CPF this year and how much is going to be available for each round of the RFA. This year, we had 1.5 million earmarked for each round and the projects that are awarded are based on specified scoring criteria. They're ranked. So, you know, if we had, say, 20 projects that came in, a certain project such as this might not have, you know, received an award based on other projects that might have scored higher. The Water Quality Committee for this round, they did incorporate one criteria for, you know, if it's incorporated into a decision like this with the Planning Board for the site. So they would lose 10 points off the bat. So it really depends on where they fall in comparison to all the other projects that come in.
And the money doesn't roll over each year?
No. Nope. So at the end of the year, if whatever funding that we do not use for water quality gets incorporated back into the general CPF fund.
So we did have, we'd had, held a public hearing. We had one caller that had concerns, but I don't think the concerns were associated with the existing hotel units, which is the purpose of this award. I think that's significant to point out and also when you have a travel time of zero years to two years, I completely support this and, and this, these are the areas that are the most critical to, to address in our town.
Yeah, I agree. I think that there, I mean, are just clear issues with, with water quality at this location. And so to me, it's, it's a fairly obvious choice and I support it.
Yeah, I, I do as well. So again, you could have a resolution on for Thursday.
Okay, the next project is another commercial septic upgrade project. This is from Fort Pond Partners LLC. It's to upgrade a property located at 11 South Emery Street in Montauk. It's a harvest right on Fort Pond. Also, the Water Quality Committee, you know, really liked to see this project come in through the RFA. Their total flow is 3,000 gallons per day and, you know, right on Fort Pond, so high priority also in a zero to two year groundwater travel time. So this project, they requested $141,500, $141,500. They're eligible for 65% of the installation costs, so they were recommended $87,100 from the water quality.
Yeah, fully supportive of this suggestion, obviously to a critical water body that we know has had challenges with the water quality. So I'm really pleased to see this come on the agenda.
So am I. And when you start looking, you know, Fort Pond globally or regionally, some of the largest property owners with a flu, with gallons per day have now upgraded recently through different means. This will include that too. So it's, it's, it's adding this to that matrix is a benefit to the environment, to the pond.
3,000 gallons per day is significant going into Fort Pond. And again, there's no travel time on this. It's basically flowing into the pond. I'm supportive.
Yeah, I, I agree as well. I mean, this one's even more obvious in terms of the water quality at this location. And, and I do want to recognize that we have funding set aside for this specific purpose and it's, it's great to, to use it for, for the intended purpose, but the applicants or the, the individuals, the businesses are also contributing quite a bit of money. So I think that that's important and we should recognize them for their efforts, you know, with the town to do this. It's not just a, a handout, you know, there's, it's, it's a partnership and I think that the water quality in the town will benefit. So just wanted to mention that.
Yeah, I, I'm in agreement as well for everything stated, but I do have a question. So the first three we've talked about are all commercial operations. Have they indicated when they would be making this upgrade? If they were to, you know, to get.
To get awarded. So they, once they are awarded, they are supposed to initiate their project within six months. The contracts are good for one year with the ability to be extended for two periods of one additional year, so two more years. So I would expect any, you know, all of them to either be in the process with getting approval with the Health Department or on their way there. They already have, you know, designs created that they were required to provide as part of their application, so they are serious about moving forward and, yeah, I would expect within the next year or two, depending on when they can get permits and things.
Thank you, Melissa.
I, I just wanted to also say that, to touch on what Ian said, you know, this is a competitive process, but commercial property owners, the program really isn't designed to fully pay for the project. It's an incentive, so we want people to move forward, but for commercial property owners, there should be some skin in the game.
And that was, I believe, recommended in maybe a second or third year of the RFA funding from the Water Quality that they would be capped at a 200,000 amount. And again, shows the changes that the committee has looked at as applications have come in to give recommendations to the Town Board then too.
Right. The first year, we actually, you know, the, the way that the funding was calculated for these kinds of projects, it wasn't enough of an incentive for people to move forward. So with some tweaks, you know, this has been working out very well.
Great. So we have one more to discuss, right?
Yep. So the last project is a little different from the others. So it's a eelgrass restoration pilot that was presented by the Peconic Baykeeper. They requested funding to implement a pilot eelgrass project in Napie Harbor using a novel technique to adhere locally sourced eelgrass seeds to juvenile hard clams to facilitate seed germination, to, you know, restore the eelgrass beds in Napie Harbor. So this pilot is being proposed for a 10,000 square foot plot. This is a good site. There are already existing eelgrass beds here, so, you know, that they, you know, can survive here. Their big thing for this project is there's a lot of really good educational benefits, getting the community involved, working with the schools, and it builds on regional work that's being done in, you know, other water bodies elsewhere and the Peconics. So this project, they requested $38,060 and the Water Quality Committee, as this is a not-for-profit organization, recommended full funding to implement this project.
Great.
Yeah, I mean, this is one that's, it's such an incredible body of water, this, that we can often get overlooked by people. I've talked to the trustees about this and many opportunities as well as the Peconic Group. You know, the, the loss of eelgrass in there has been significant over the last few years. One of the things that's been mentioned is the water temperature having some impact on that. Will this seeding project kind of utilize water temperatures to kind of ensure as much success as possible?
I think it'll be monitored, but I think this is just kind of a pilot to see how well this novel technique works and it'll be used for applications to, you know, maybe expand using other water bodies where the conditions allow for it.
Thank you. I'm supportive.
And I also, as far as this location is one of the only locations in which, it's something I would like to address later on, which is the loading of fertilizers that actually inhibit growth on there, which many Obeymen actually think that inhibits, or is killing off eelgrass. It's just flowing off then too, so maybe we can talk more about that later. But again, around Napie, as Tom is correct, there's not that many houses there that have those type of lawns as we, Northwest, Northwest Harbor, Northwest Creek, there used to be a huge amount of eelgrass. None anymore.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to see that we're responding to these changes that we're seeing and as, as, you know, this is the other side of the coin, a really good use for this funding. Stop it before, but also address restoration in the areas that have already been degraded. So I'm, I'm fully supporting with this. It's a great use of funding.
Yeah, I am as well. I think it's, it's a super cool idea, you know, clams with eelgrass seeds burying themselves and hopefully the eelgrass will grow. I'm not a scientist, but sounds like a great idea. I hope it works and I think we'd have many more applications of the same technique.
Great. All right. Thank you, Melissa.
That's all I had. So here's just some photos of, so the Peconic Baykeeper will be working with our shellfish hatchery at the town and as well as, you know, some of the local schools.
And so just full transparency, Pierre Topping is the Peconic Baykeeper. He is a member of the Water Quality Technical Advisory Committee. He actually accuses himself from this project and even more so, he's a graduate of the East Hampton Town Aquaculture Department too.
All right. So next up, we have Skip the Stuff with the Surf Rider Foundation, Eastern Long Island Chapter. Welcome, Jenna.
So I'd like to introduce Jenna Schwartzman and just give a little framing of this discussion. Jenna brought this to me actually last year, but we were, we were hard into instituting the compost pilot program. So I thank Jenna for her patience on bringing this to us now. And, and this is going to be a presentation on how to further reduce the waste that's going into our waste stream. And that's important for all the reasons that Jenna's going to point out. It's also cost saving to the business owners. But David and I attended on behalf of the supervisor, a Suffolk County Summit, All-Town Summit, which also included the three largest towns.
Long Island, actually.
In Nassau County. And this was to address the upcoming closure of the Brookhaven landfill and also the impacts of the goals and that are coming forth in, to achieve the goals in the Climate Action Plan that was signed by the governor. There's going to be significant changes and we're going to have to look at ways to reduce our waste. So from even the importance that you brought to me in the past, it has now taken on new significant importance as all the towns in Long Island are going to seek ways to reduce the cost of removing waste from our towns, solid waste, and transporting it and where we're going to put it. And one of the suggestions that was put forth at this first meeting of the summit was reducing the waste stream to begin with. So with that, Jenna?
Thank you. You did a little help with this. Thank you. While we're working on that, thank you so much for having me. Really excited to see that so far the agenda today has been all about water quality in our beaches, so really happy to be here.
And one thing, in full screen, you're good to go.
Thank you. Good morning, or afternoon now, East Hampton Town Board. My name is Jenna Schwartzman. I work for the Surf Rider Foundation as the Eastern Long Island Chapter Manager and I'm here to talk about the problem of plastic pollution and one way that we as, as a community can prevent plastic from the source. For those who aren't familiar with the Surf Rider Foundation, we are a national nonprofit organization dedicated to the protection and enjoyment of the world's ocean waves and beaches for all people through a powerful activist network. Our priorities include clean water, beach access, coasting climate, ocean protection, and plastic pollution. We address these concerns through local grassroots chapters. Our chapter is active all over the East End and we're active members of this community. You may know us from leading initiatives such as our Ocean Friendly Garden Program. We have our BioSwell on Methodist Lane. We also collaborate with Concerned Citizens of Montauk on our Blue Water Task Force Program. And yes, they do sample weekly at South Lake, just so you know, in the summer. We also work on the problem we're talking about today, which is plastic pollution and Plastic pollution is everywhere. It's in our water, in our air, and it's contaminating our beaches and our bodies at an alarming rate. 9% of plastics are recycled and I just learned only 2% of those are effectively recycled, meaning turned into new items. So for example, a water bottle turning into another water bottle. 12% are incinerated, releasing harmful toxins into the atmosphere and creating toxic ash that needs to be disposed. And a staggering 79% of plastics ends up in landfills or the environment. So we really need to reduce our demand of single-use plastic, especially starting in our own backyard. Speaking of, our Eastern Long Island Chapter has hosted hundreds of beach cleanups on the East End for over two decades and we meticulously track what we are cleaning up. This photo is from a cleanup we did at Navy Beach with some of our partners for Earth Day last year. Also seen here is a subset of our data. So from 2019 to 2023, our volunteers recorded data on 158 beach cleanups and in just those four years, we have saved over 1,400 pieces of takeout stuff from our beaches. By stuff, I mean accessories that come with takeout orders, like plastic utensils, stirrers, and so on. And this is just what we've collected and counted. We know the numbers are much higher in reality and we can't beach clean our way out of this problem. This is why we support a skip the stuff policy where restaurants only make these disposable items available upon request. This is a costly problem for all. The restaurant pays for these extra materials purchasing by the case, but is this a necessary expense? If they aren't, oh, sorry, if they are included in every order automatically, but the customer didn't want them, it's a waste for both parties. This extra stuff becomes a burden to the customer who must decide whether to use it because they received it automatically without asking, stash it away in a junk drawer and eventually throw it out. The vast majority of these single-use items cannot be recycled and end up incinerated or in landfills paid for by the taxpayer. They add to our plastic pollution crisis, littering our streets, parks, rivers, and oceans, entering the food chain along the way. The problem has only intensified because of the COVID-19 pandemic, when many restaurants increased their takeout business. And while that was vital to their business at the time, we feel that an important change can be made now to benefit the restaurant owner, the customer, and the environment. We're asking for a skip the stuff ordinance requiring all East Hampton Town restaurants to provide takeout accessories by request only. Takeout orders should only include accessories like utensils, napkins, condiment packets, stirrers, and coffee lid stoppers, AKA stuff, if and when the customer requests them. Right now, we're working with an opt-out model, which doesn't always work because restaurant staff are used to handing out this stuff with every single order, whether it's coming from a diner that wants to take their leftovers to go, people ordering over the phone or through third-party delivery apps. Staff have the muscle memory to put in the stuff every single time. We must change to an opt-in model where the default is not to include these items. It would be very similar to when you go to a store and they ask, do you want a bag? With this kind of legislation, we can take preventative action and make a real impact. We see skip the stuff as a benefit for all. It's not a total ban. The customers can still receive these items if they ask for it. The restaurant saves money and our beaches will see a lot less plastic waste. Skip the stuff has already passed in several locations, including New York City and Westchester County. Locally, we were successful passing skip the stuff in East Hampton Village, which will take effect this fall. We'd love to see this effort continue at the town level and beyond. Since skip the stuff is so new, we don't have great data on the cost savings just yet, but we have this very similar example. We have this very similar example. Juice Shop that adopted a skip the straw policy saw a 90% reduction in straw usage and cost, saving an estimated $3,000 per year. And that's just straws. If businesses are spending money on an excess of utensils, condiment packets, napkins, et cetera, they could potentially save even more with this rate of reduction. Restaurants would not have to change their materials, they would just have to change some habits. Some recommendations we have include training staff to keep stuff out of the bag and ask customers if they need it, updating delivery systems, and have educational signage to inform the customer about these changes and benefits. This is a quote from Reusable New York City that we think can apply here. Imagine, no more single-use stuff when you sit down to eat. Cathes that encourage you to bring a reusable cup. Takeout and delivery that asks if you require utensils and condiments. No more drawers of unneeded plastic forks. East Hampton, this is our mission. We can do this. Here's my contact information. If anybody has questions, I'm happy to answer them now or later. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Jenna.
Thank you. Excellent presentation. And like, so critical, we talked about dish lanes with the garbage there and just, you know, I was going to bring up my sanitation report, you know. We do at a town level recycle our plastic, but there's a lot of waste cycling that goes on. People putting clam shells in there and, you know, there is plastic that can be recycled, there is plastic that cannot be recycled. But, you know, ensuring we cut the flow at the very start is the absolute key to managing it both in the water and on the land with the Litter Action Committee. So I fully support this.
Thank you.
Do you draft legislation that you did for the village that you can pass to councilmember Rogers?
Yes, I believe I shared it already, but happy to pass on to the whole board.
I definitely support the concept. You know, I always want to hear the other side of things, why it might be problematic. But the way it's laid out, I don't see what that argument will be. I still welcome it, but just having to ask for something you might need seems like it's not too onerous of a thing to do. And they don't just end up on the beaches or landfills, they're in the woods on the side of the road. And, you know, I would want to look, see the specific legislation, but it seems like an obvious thing to do.
Yeah, I like to compare it to the Suffolk County Bag Law because before that took effect in 2018, not that many people were voluntarily bringing their reusable bags to the store. And then as soon as it took effect, people started to change. And it saved 1.1 billion plastic bags in just one year. And that's because they switched from automatically giving it out for free and making it the default option to one where you have to request it and pay for it. So I really think that combination was very successful.
And I think that not only is this essential as we move into a sustainable future and close up this tremendous amount of waste, again, that's going to cost us not only in the purchasing, but in the future, as I've said, it's going to cost the restaurants on the Carding Inn as the price of Carding is going to go sky high across Long Island in the future, in the near future. And that's a situation that County Executive Romaine is trying to address on a regional level. I think anything we can take out of the waste stream at this point that is usually ends up in the waste stream without being used. I know that people would prefer to use their at-home utensils rather than the plastic stuff that came in. And a lot of times it just gets, doesn't go into the drawer, it gets tossed into the garbage. So I think this is a very timely idea and I'm supportive of this. Folks have said to me on the other side of the coin, you know, how are you going to, how are you going to enforce this? But I think part of this will be an enforcement of awareness of what we can do to just have better habits for something that's just so completely unnecessary. So, and as the liaison to the Litter Action Committee, I'm going to show a brief slideshow of where this stuff ends up. Besides in our water, it ends up all over East Hampton. So it's an aesthetic idea and an environmental idea and a cost-saving idea down the line for the municipality and the community. So I'm supportive.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenna. Now I'd like to invite up Alice Cooley from Matthews-Curston Cooley. Alice had come to the meeting, was it last month, I guess it was, wasn't it, Alice?
Yes.
Yeah. And you have a zone request, so.
Can I do?
Yes, you can.
You have faith in me?
Complete faith. And congratulations. Let's go hit that, hit that over here in the background.
Okay.
And let's hit escape. And that way you can find your presentation.
Ah, you see it.
All right, let's go back to zoom.
Okay. Here?
Yeah, it's yours, Chris.
You're really testing me here. Wow.
And, see?
I don't. Okay.
Oh, there we go. Okay. Very good. Thank you for your patience. Oh, can I rotate this?
I think you can.
Yeah. Ah, there we go. Okay, very good. Good morning, board members. I'm Alice Cooley of Matthews-Curston Cooley. I'm here on behalf of Maurice and Sarah Uticone, who are here with me today, and Donna and Richard Appel, the owners of 184 and 180 Soundview Drive, respectively, in Montauk. In addition, we also have consent from Stephen and Donna Cortese, who are the owners of 192 Soundview Drive. They also support this request. I'm also here today with Aram Turchunian of First Coastal. As you know, we submitted this zone change request to the prior administration in November of 2023 to extend the existing coastal erosion overlay Zone 4 that covers the homes on Soundview Avenue and Captain Kidd's Path to include my client's homes and the two properties to the south. So that map you see right before you, that's what we're looking for. We're just looking for that small extension that's shown in yellow. Aram will make our technical presentation, but I want to first reiterate three points. The first is that the erosion in this area affecting these properties has drastically increased recently and my clients' homes are in imminent peril. Over the last decade, our clients' properties have experienced unprecedented erosion, including a loss of almost 30 feet this past winter. They are understandably deeply concerned about the future of their homes and they're asking for your help. I'd like to show a few images. Aram, can you point out these numbers, please?
This purple line is the 2021 Bluff Crest. And this is the 2024 Bluff Crest today. And this is 24 feet is the change in that period of time. And then 34 feet is the difference from the Bluff Bluff Crest to the one.
And what number of building is that? That's 180?
180.
Thank you.
Here's an drone shot of the closer house is 184. And the house that's a little further away is 180. And you can see the absolute scouring into the bluff. You can see the collapsed stairway. You can see that some of their improvements have fallen down into the bluff. You can see how threatened their homes are. My second point is that we believe including these four properties in Zone 4 is correcting a mapping mistake. We believe these four properties were left out of Zone 4 in error as they have the same coastal boundary as all the other properties in Zone 4 on Captain Kidd's Path and Soundview Avenue. These four properties have the same exact coastal boundary as those on Soundview Drive and Captain Kidd's Path. But those homeowners have been given the ability to protect their homes through the installation of hardened coastal structures. Whereas these four do not have that ability since coastal erosion overlay Zone 2 prohibits these structures. Almost every single property on Soundview or Captain Kidd's Path, 32 of 36 have hardened structures and 28 have both bulkhead and stone armor revetments. And that's with permits from the town. So if you take a look at this, this is the Army Corps sediment budget. You can see that that coastal boundary is a straight shot. And that includes those four properties. You can see that there is 1,300 feet of hardened shoreline to the immediate east of our client's properties. And we all know that that has an impact. The erosion I discussed in my first point has been accelerated by these structures. And our clients should be afforded the same protections as their immediate neighbors as they are identically situated. My third point is that because of the geography, there are no other similarly situated properties that need to be considered that would be affected by this zone change. After these four properties, the coastline turns at Cludon Point Park and a town and county preserve, and then the coast makes a nearly 90-degree turn to the south, obviating the need for coastal protection. Lastly, I want to say that even though we consider this to be a correction of a past mapping mistake, we do not make this request lightly. The Uticones approached me about this request in July of 2023 after pursuing a soft solution through Natural Resources Special Permits. They submitted their application in October of 2019 and received this permit in March of 2023. But by the time that permit was issued, it became clear that a soft solution would be completely ineffective against the type of erosion affecting the property. Aram realized a different approach would be necessary and contacted the prior town attorney about modifying the coastal erosion overlay Zone in May of 2023, and he was very receptive. And that brings us to today. With that, I will turn the floor over to Aram for his technical presentation.
Thank you, Alice. Welcome, Aram.
Good morning.
Morning.
Aram Turchunian, First Coastal Corporation, West Hampton Beach, New York. Thank you. Just want to go over some of the geology and coastal processes behind this stretch of shoreline and why I feel strongly that these four properties should have been initially included. And they weren't. And if you go back to like, quote in my handout, in the LWRP, when they originally did the mapping, they acknowledged that they were using the information that was available at the time. And the study that the Army Corps did was not available. So really what we're looking at here is more complete technical information, which should be the basis for the mapping. So if we can just go back a little bit. Let's see. So what is a literal cell? Well, they're really important when we study shorelines. We want to break the shoreline into compartments and boundaries that are natural, that are not artificial. And in this particular case, Lake Montauk is at the center of this sediment budget. And to the left is Soundview Drive. And you can see that the sediment budget goes all the way to the western part of Cludon Point because that's a natural boundary. And as a consequence, within that boundary, you want to get a coherent approach to the shoreline. What you don't want is an ad hoc approach. So that's the fundamental basis of including these four properties in the mapping zone. The other part of it is that as a result of the way that the shoreline to the east has been stabilized, there really wasn't a coherent strategy. And that's unfortunate because it's resulted in, it's resulted in really the problem we have right now. Because if you look, well, I guess that's not the best one. Nature abhors right angles, especially on the coast. It really wants to smooth things out. And the problem here is that we have a lot of right angles. Right there, that, you're looking at the top of the screen is the last bulkhead that was permitted. Now, it's understandable, the location is understandable because there was a home there and the only way to save the home was to put the bulkhead in that location. But what that's done is created this right angle. So we have two problems. Number one, you have no sediment supply because nothing's coming west from the inlet. And number two, you have this hard structure with right angles, which automatically causes the waves to refract or bend around it and impact on the shoreline. And you can see that reflected again in the center of the photo where you can see the bluff is undermined roughly 30 feet from the corner of the house. So, you know, from a design point of view, this is very, very challenging. Because what we want to do is to move as far landward as possible with anything that's going to protect the bluff, yet provide a factor of safety such that the home itself doesn't collapse into the bay. So even if this board were to grant our request, we still have a pretty significant engineering challenge ahead of us to solve this problem. And, you know, going back to this photo, again, you know, we have this, you know, really an ad hoc solution here. Right by the inlet, there are a series of rock revetments. Then you have a whole series of bulkheads. Then you have an area, it's kind of a nice wide sandy beach because it's got bulkheads east and west of it that kind of hold that in place. But all that sand was destined for Cludon Point and it just never got there. And now that the Army Corps has run into a glacial erratic in the middle of the channel, they're even getting less material that's going to go on to the beach to the west. So even more problematic in reinstating the sediment. So, you know, I think the last thing I'll leave you with is, you know, the fact that this area really is increasing in erosion over time. See if I can find that. Side by side, here it is. Okay. I'm just going to walk up there so I can point it out to you. This is a 2001 aerial photo. That house at 180 is pretty much the same as it is today. The house at 184 has been changed, but not that much. It didn't get any closer. This is 2023. This loss here, the distance here, is 150 feet. Now, that's a lot. But if you average it out over the period of time, it's about 10 feet, 12 feet per year. But this just eroded 24 feet in the last year. So we're seeing an acceleration of erosion here. And what we don't want to see happen is one of the houses fall in. So I believe that there's a strong technical case for modifying the boundary to respect the natural boundary as opposed to any artificial boundary. It's information that wasn't available when the map was created and is available now. And appreciate your consideration. Happy to answer any questions.
I just, just as a process, I have a process question. Rob, I think this might be for you. Under 150-45 of the town code, we have the Waterfront Advisory Committee, which is a codified committee. And there's a code section that says what has to go in front of them for comment. And I believe that this would be an amendment to the LWRP that would have to go in front of that committee.
I think that's correct.
Okay. That's the only comment I have.
Yeah, so I think the way the process is working, we're, thank you for coming in today and presenting for the board. We're going to obviously send your request to the Waterfront Advisory Committee and to Brian Frank in our natural resource, in our planning department, to just take a look at this. And then we'll get probably a sense in the next week or so when we could schedule a town board discussion of the application or the request.
Yeah, I'm certainly sympathetic to the homeowners here, but hard structures are difficult. This is the problem is once you start to do them, where This is the problem, is once you start to do them, where do you draw the line? As Kathy said, I'm very curious to hear what our internal people think, Brian Frank from the planning department and natural resources. You know, I'm not a coastal geologist or a scientist. Clearly, there's an issue here. We just want to make sure that we exercise caution with a zoning map change like this that can have big implications. So again, I'm sympathetic, but I would love to hear from our own experts.
Yeah, I share those sentiments exactly. The only thing I would kind of iterate, given what we've discussed today today, is while we see the bulkheads have been effective, are there other measures which are more environmentally sensitive, such as a hardened living shoreline, that could kind of achieve the same goal that we're trying to do, which is to protect houses here? So if we progress with this from an engineering perspective, you know, I'd like to look at all options that will provide protection.
The homeowners, Sarah Maurice, did you want to make any comments?
Yeah.
If you're going to, if you want to, okay, okay, okay. Okay, great, thank you. All right.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so now we're in the home stretch here. We're at chapter 255 zoning, alternate members for ZBA and ARB. Rob, do you want to, oh, good.
I'll come up.
Come to the podium. So we need to, Patrick, could you just take the presentation down so we can see Rob on screen?
That's not necessary.
That's why people tune in, Rob.
Beautiful. Thank you.
So the last time that we discussed this proposed legislation, we had, we were proposing just to add alternate member to the zoning board. After discussion, though, we thought it might be a good idea to add an alternate member to the other five-member appointed board, the ARB. And the question's been asked, why not also the planning board? Well, the planning board already has seven members. It's a different process. It's a longer process. It's more collaborative between the board and the applicant, and there's more give and take, whereas with the, specifically with the ZBA, the applicants are waiting an extended period of time to get a public hearing. And it's really their one shot to get before the board and, you know, either get their application approved or denied. There was also some discussion about members of the zoning board and ARB, if they're absent because of illness, they can watch the presentation and come to the conclusion after reviewing the video. In fairness to the applicant, though, I think allowing for an alternate member to sit in place of a ill member gives the applicant the courtesy of a full board and can take any comments from that member and respond to it at the public hearing, whereas if the member is absent due to illness, the applicant doesn't have a chance to respond to the comments of the ill member. So I think keeping the alternate for somebody who's absent because of sickness or conflict of interest is only fair to the applicant. I think that's what the goal of this legislation is. Because we're seeing, you know, we have a couple of applications now that have been denied by default because it's a 2-2 decision. And that means that the applicant either can Article 78 or has to start the entire process again, and that could result in another two years before they get before the board again.
Okay, so you want to just take us through the changes, Rob?
Sure, so as we've discussed, the alternate members are, the town board can name up to two additional alternate members there to serve in an instance of a conflict of interest or an absence because of illness. And there's also a provision in the zoning board portion where it says that the alternate members need to comply with training and continued education requirements described in New York State Town Law 267-7A. There's a question of why doesn't that say that in the ARB section as well? The reason is because the zoning board of appeals is created by New York State Town Law. There is no provision in New York State Town Law that requires an architectural review board. And the town law requires that zoning board members obtain that training. That's really the major changes to the law that we're considering today.
Do town board members have questions or comments?
No, I'll comment as a town board member, but also as a former zoning board member. I think that, I think this makes sense, considering the volume of applications that the zoning board and the ARB go through. And as you said, the planning, the planning board process is very different from the two other boards, who only have five members as well. I think this also is, I agree with you, I think it's more than a courtesy. I think applicants deserve a full board when they, when they take that very long process that can take up to a year to get in front of the board to be heard, and the neighbors also, or anyone in opposition or in favor to be heard. So I think, I think it's incumbent upon us to offer a full board at that hearing. I also think that, as you said, in terms of upholding and protecting board determinations, as you know, a 3, a 2-1 is a very weak determination that a court may or may not uphold. And 2-2 is a de facto denial, so that there's no chance for any further discussion on that. It has to get kicked back. And again, it goes back into that very large cycle and again, can really delay people on both sides, not only for the public, which is prime for me, but also for the board members themselves and their workloads, and for staff as well. It becomes an endless cycle. So I think this is, we've always had this option to do this, and I think with the, as we've seen the number of applications increase over time, I think it's a timely moment to offer people a full board as often as possible.
Yeah, I would, I would second that, Kate. And I've had individuals reach out to me who have run into this, where there's been a split 2-2 vote. And the cost they've incurred as a result is not insignificant. So I think for me, this is a way for us to be more efficient in government and provide a better service to our constituents.
Can you explain the process a little bit? So the board member will sit on every application?
Yes, they should appear at every hearing so that they have a, you know, full breadth of knowledge of the application. And if they're called in to, you know, make a decision, they have the benefit of being at the prior meetings.
So they don't sit at the dais, but they would sit?
Right, they would sit in the audience.
In the audience.
My question along those lines is the mechanism here, or how, who decides? Does the chair decide, you know, which of the alternates is up next? Do they just go back and forth if there's two alternates? If they are there, they're an alternate at the hearing itself, are they automatically in on the decision? Or is it a meeting to meeting? It seems like it should be by application, and I don't see that spelled out here.
If the alternate is sitting at the public hearing, then they are, they should be the voting member during the deliberations.
Yeah, I would, I would agree. I don't know if it says that in here enough, or maybe it's, maybe it's good, but that's just a question I have. And also just anticipating that at some point, I mean, boards change over time. And it, you know, I think right now the town has boards that usually get along, and the ones that I've known are that way. But we should anticipate any potential abuse of this, you know, of putting somebody in place, or just making sure how an alternate is selected, that it's clear to everybody involved.
Okay. I think the way that the supervisor had tried to recruit members of the community to participate in the boards at the beginning of her term is probably the best way to do it here.
I think the way we went, you know, it's how we got you.
I'm here, yes.
It is a town board appointment, as far as I understand.
Are there other municipalities operating with a similar structure?
Yes, yeah. Village of East Hampton, Southampton doesn't have to do it, because they already have, they actually have a six-member board, but they're allowed to have up to seven members. Village of Southampton, they all have alternate members.
Is there any reason why you wouldn't increase the board to seven members instead of having alternates?
You can't any longer. It's a, I believe it was from 1950s. If you had a seven-member board from 1957 going forward, you're allowed to keep your membership at seven members. But if you haven't, then you have to have either a five-member board or a three-member board.
Good enough reason.
We researched it. So I think unless, I mean, I don't know if, to Ian's point, if there, if you think the language, you know, suffices for?
I do, I think that's more of just a policy.
Okay. Yeah, a chair, a chair decision.
So why don't we put this on for, we could notice it on Thursday, Rob?
Okay.
And hear it.
June 6.
Yeah, in, first meeting in June. That would be great. And then the last one we have is chapter two, access to public records.
Sure. So I've changed this legislation from how I proposed it the last time we spoke about it. If you remember, the impetus behind this is to take some of the burn away from the town clerk's office, because the process was that Carol would be getting all of the requests for foils, then she would be sending that request out to the departments and to the town attorney's office. And how it was supposed to function is the departments review, get together the materials that are responsive, and send it to the town attorney's office to review before sending out. A lot of times what's happening is the departments are getting the request, and they're sending it out on their own without any review. So what's happening is sometimes confidential information is being released to the public, or sometimes just documents that are not responsive to the request at all are going out. So the idea here is the town clerk's office will always be the custodian of records. That's, I believe, codified in New York State Town Law. Excuse me, I apologize. The town board has the option, this town board and town boards going forward have the option, where a department can designate somebody in their department as the foil officer. And this was, is to Mr. Buddha's point, the town assessor's office handles their own foil requests, as does the building department. That wasn't really in the current, existing chapter two, but that's how it's been in practice for all these years. So now, we're codifying that, where the assessor and the building department, or any other department, can designate their own foil officer. But in the event that those departments do not designate a foil officer, then the town attorney office is the de facto record officer for those departments. The current, current law does not provide for an appeal. And most municipalities, the town supervisor is the appeal officer. And the problem with making the town attorney's office the appeals officer is because we're reviewing the documents already, and we're deciding what should and shouldn't be going out to the public. So there's impropriety there if the town attorney's office is also the appeals officer.
I think so.
But other than that, that's, that's pretty much it in a nutshell. I think it'll streamline the process and, you know, it's already, you know, town code sections like this are really just codifying what's already in New York State Town Law. Have to comply with the public officer's law. And this is just making it easier for the public to know how the town is going to go ahead and do that.
Folks have questions?
No, I support, I support the change in the legislation.
Yeah, I support it as well. I think it's very important to, for the public to be able to get information. I also think the public needs to understand how much work that is on our end. And so I appreciate this step so that we can get the public the information they need, but also in an orderly way. Because it's, we get a lot of requests.
Carol can speak to that, and it's exploded, hasn't it, Carol, in the last few years, the requests that you proceed through foil? Sorry.
So, no, no, so I'm supportive.
Yeah, likewise, I'm supportive. Again, relatively new to some of this, I would, you know, understanding a bit more about the appeals process to the supervisor and how that would work, I'd want to kind of get a little bit more understanding of that. You know, is that just an arbitrary decision that's going to be made? Is it a decision that the supervisor will be making based on law? You know, would counsel be giving her advice as to those appeals or not? Or would that just be at the supervisor's discretion?
Sure, so, I mean, the open meeting, the public officer's law delineates what is and what isn't foilable. So if, say, the town attorney's office makes a determination that a request is not, does not comply with foil, we will rewrite that decision, send it out to the person who's seeking the records, and then they will have the option of appealing that decision to the supervisor. And she will be able to look at, you know, the reason for the denial, and either uphold it or deny it.
Okay. I don't have any comments.
I'm not a legal scholar, I've been told. I did take business law in college.
I don't know, 10 years working in town.
I mean, I think the main thing is if, we want to make sure that we are harmonious with, you know, public officer's law, so.
Yeah. And we're making it easier for folks that were responsive to folks, but at the same time, you know, information that shouldn't be shared, whether it's phone numbers of folks or, you know, addresses that, you know, don't need to be in the document, that it gets redacted. Just want to confirm all that. So if this is ready, Rob, if you could also put this on for Thursday to notice, so that we can hear it in June, that would be great. It goes towards, you know, we've been saying all along, we've been trying to modernize how we do business here in town government, and that'll go, that will help. Okay, so we've gotten through our nine topics today that we discussed, and we did it in great time, and we're two hours into the meeting. Now we're up to liaison reports.
Liaison reports.
You're it, Tom.
All right, here we go. Armageddon Advisory Committee, we met last night. Rebecca Hansen, the town administrator, was the guest speaker. She gave an excellent presentation, was warmly received. Following her presentation, the discussion focused really around the senior center, still concerns from that committee with regards to the size, the absence of the basement and services offered. Dr. Pepper gave a presentation showing a feasibility study done with a comparable project in Raleigh, North Carolina. Other than that, key areas raised were concerns over fire pits in residential properties, especially with the amount of fuel on the ground right now in some of these more wooded areas, possibility of doing a public campaign just to advise people as to what is the safest way to have a fire pit in your backyard. As well as that, there was a discussion around the sponsor a highway program with the town highway department. There's concern that a lot of signs are up with people's names on them, but the roads aren't being cleaned. So wanting to kind of touch base with the highway department litter action committee to ensure that happens. Human services.
I can answer that.
Yeah, I mean, I think, yeah, go ahead.
Kate, I've been working on this then, too. There's many signs that are up there that we are surveying to be removed if they're not actually actively enrolled into the litter, sorry, the town.
Adopt a road.
Stop the road program. But when that happens, typically, a lot of times what happens is the person that was on the sign will start calling. So we're outreach-ing part of, you know, No Fleeting Spring, and we're trying to get them down in a timely fashion on their staffing allows.
And I just want to talk about the program for a second. It's a voluntary program, and they're meant to clean up a number of times a year. It's not like folks have to go out every weekend. There's no penalty if you miss a cleanup. But I think that overall, the program is a successful program, and at least the signs also raise awareness of litter as well, so.
We've reformulated the process as far as, if you want to sign up, everyone can sign up. I believe it's eight times a year also. But yeah, we're working on that time. That specific aspect of this, Kate and I have met on a couple of times with the committee also. Thank you.
And Tom, just going back with the concern for fire pits at home, I mean, I know your meeting was last night, but we could always outreach to Chief Fire Marshal, you know, Dave Brown.
Yeah.
To see if that's really an issue. Are there, you know?
Is it a risk?
Is, yeah.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Human Services is starting a garden club, June 11th. It will take place on the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month at 4:00 p.m. Fire Marshal has been incredibly busy inspecting the public assemblies' locations and with special permits as well. Just wanted to call out that if people are applying for tent permits, please be sure that you are meeting the requirements of submitting that permit application, because there's been a lot of back and forth happening there. ADU implementation, we had our first meeting last Wednesday. Currently, we're, the committee is reviewing the code restrictions on ADU. on ADUs, and looking to update the website and process for building ADUs. Peconic Estry, actually, kind of a big report here. We had a meeting on the 8th. Just a few things to call out here, with kind of interest to the community. The first is the homeowner rewards program. Just to let people know that there's a program in place that they can receive funding to purchase native plants, rain barrels. For more information on this program, you can go to peconicestry.org/whatyoucando/homeownerrewardsprogram. They also have on that website a great database of native plants for those looking to adjust their gardens. As well as that, they introduced some projects. One was about the Half Shells for Habitat, which is the recycling of oyster shells to actually then go back into the aquaculture environment to increase water quality and oyster shell viability. For more information on that program, if people are interested in up taking it, there's a website called halfshelvesforhabitat.org. Finally, there is a project called Project Rise, which is looking at time lapses of the shore change over time. There are a few locations in the town of East Hampton where they have been doing this. These include the Landing Lane at Acabonic Harbor, Laos Point, Lazy Point, and the Montauk Inlet. They have an opening for one more location, if there is interest across the town to, to explore how that coastlines are changing over time. Moving on to disability.
Put the camera?
No, that's, so that's a four by four post.
Yeah.
It was your camera set on top of it, and dedicated geocaching locations. It was, it was put up, requested the town by the Peconic Baykeeper, and those locations are up and going, and it's like a chron, it's a chronologue of all the information that comes in for sea level rise, and those locations were requested. We added a couple more, so the request is, if there's another.
There's another location, yeah, we won.
I would say that, let's ask Peter Topping where he might want it. That might be more beneficial with where he might see best, but yeah, I mean, that's no problem. I mean, see, I'm supportive.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, and also maybe outreach to Aubrey Peterson and the high school students environmental club.
Sure.
It's nice to get them involved with citizen scientist activities like that.
Yeah, the town already has a draft MOU with the Peconic Baykeeper on that already. So we, we might have to look at that, but overall, I'm supportive of it.
East Hampton Youth Task Force, there's a subcommittee meeting that took place. A lot of discussion around the great success of I Try in this community, and how it has been such a great win for young ladies and females in the community. There's discussion as to trying to introduce something similar for young men in the community, looking at the fifth and sixth grades. And there's some private individuals who will be actually looking to provide funding to launch this program, which is a great win for the town. Lastly, the Anti-Bass Task Force. Few things going on here. We are revamping the town webpage for this. Additionally, I just want to make people aware of a few things coming up. June 1st, we have the Pride Parade. The deadline for registration to be in that parade is Wednesday, May 29th. You can go to hamptonspride.org to register. And additionally, next month, obviously, there's the Juneteenth celebration that we're taking place in the village, and they are looking for vendors and attendees to, to take place with that. And more information on that can be found on the village website. And lastly, for the Business Advisory Committee, Samantha Klein and the Chair of that committee, Maria Militia from the Montauk Chamber of Commerce, we are looking to launch as part of the environmentally shop local campaign to just encourage more shopping local, because this has a lower environmental impact. So we are looking to see what other towns have done with regards to this, and potentially put something forward for the town of East Hampton as well.
Right, thank you, Tom. David?
Yes, the Nation Preserve Committee met, we met on Thursday, and most of the discussions were surrounding the field management plan, which we have one of the, close to the final draft. It's going to be presented to the Acabonic, sorry, to the Amagansett Citizens Advisory Committee. Surely for any sort of comments before it comes to the town board. There was also discussions, not just about fire load, but specifically about reforestation of locations that have been decimated within the townships and nature preserves, that are trying to come up with a process of that, you know, with the community involvement, that we can work with the DEC saplings program also then, too. That's going to be a little bit of a longer lasting discussion. We'll continue to work on that. Since my dog ate my homework last week, after five hours.
You didn't?
No, I don't, but, but it might have been me eating it. It was just a long meeting. The Montauk CAC met the week before last. Most of the discussion was about the upcoming summer season, beach procedures downtown Montauk, the FEMP project being substantially complete. I'll report on that hopefully in the next couple of weeks and such. But that's what the Montauk CAC was discussing, was a robust showing. Project Rise on there. I think that would be a wonderful thing to do, potentially for our PR, a press release also, Madam Supervisor, so maybe we can get some more information. Tom mentioned myself. Over to Patrick, that'd be great. As you could tell, coming to Montauk, there is a lot of construction going on right now. Some of this jointly with the town of East Hampton and the county, specifically in Montauk right now, there's paving ongoing on Edgemere on the county roads, which are South Edgemere, Flamingo, and also Westlake, Westlake Road then, too. I want to thank legislator Ann Welker, and our former legislator, Fleming, for working with the supervisor to get the funding for these roads. In talking to the Montauk CAC about that, no one remembered when it was done last. Maybe it was that long ago then, too. So they're paving from the butt joint down here on the circle, all the way north. So there would be some inconveniences on there. Part of that also was an increase of, increasing amount of drainage that they put in on both of those roads also, again, not necessarily as part of the MS4 project, but mostly trying to curtail road runoff then to, into any of our critical water bodies then, too. This actually goes right into the town's paving projects. I want to thank Steve Lynch and his staff for all the paving that they're doing within the town, specifically starting in Montauk. So again, yes, there might be some inconveniences. As I mentioned earlier about this, the installation of security cameras, those are ongoing. Many of them are coming online right now. This is, is a multi-year process of capital funding for security cameras, some of our comfort station locations, parking lots, and also some of our recreational sites. I want to thank Eddie Schnell for his assistance on that. We are, I know I've said this in the past, but we are expecting the pickleball and the basketball courts to be, to be epoxied in the upcoming days. So again, there might be some inconvenience to user groups on that, when those are being painted and finalized. You'll see out here in Montauk, which we are right now, the town's investment in the Montauk has been tremendous. We talked about that already, nearly a million dollar project for South Lake. The playhouse being at over a $13 million project is fully underway right now. They're proceeding through that project at a pretty rapid pace and on schedule with their concrete underpinning, removal of the interior, specifically trying to work with abating noise for the continued use of the other participants in the, in the playhouse. So they've actually put in some of the insulation and wall, a wall fiberboard on there in advance, so try to knock down some of that sound. So that's still ongoing, and I'll continue to present that. The Second House Restoration Project is about to start to be underway within the next couple of days. There's, there's also can be the onsite meeting of some of the trades. I think Madam Supervisor, maybe, presentation maybe in June or July.
That'd be great.
That would be great, here in Montauk. It's been a multi-phase project, and I thank you, I thank the Montauk Historical Society for their, their patience on that. As you'll see on North Main Street today, the town's investment into streetscape is ongoing right now. North Main Street, we're ongoing with additional bricking and cobblework at location. Again, North Main Street's interesting. It's a, it's a county road that splits between the village and the town, but the village, entities, the town entities, but we all are one township. So we're trying to make it harmonious to all. You can see that by putting some new trees in, taking them down that were cut down by the, by the poles going in almost a decade now. So that's going on forward. We also will be working on Montauk streetscape. I want to thank the town board for supporting that part of the capital project. We'll be adding on some bricking and some new ADA matting going on there in the next upcoming days. So there, again, there might be some inconvenience, but the reward is in the end. As far as water quality, we talked about South Lake today. I want to let everyone know that the, the Second House IA installation is complete. Again, another one of the town facilities, that we've upgraded the septic system. In that location, we've also upgraded the septic system for Fort Pond. One of the locations was also Lyons Field then, too. We're continuing to look at the rest of the town's properties. What I did mention earlier, and what Melissa was saying, is that we are pushing off the Gin Beach septic installation until post the summer season. We're also doing that with South Edison out here then, too. And South Edison is, is, is part of our, our permit for our lifeguard beaches, so we can't have it closed. It was just too, too tight to the season. The contractor is holding the, the cost for that. CPS, CPF Advisory Committee met, and yesterday had some discussions on upcoming potential changes to the CPF. And it was not, it's just a nice, nice committee. Also, lastly, I wanted to discuss everyone that I'm going to have, we're going to put in a request to apply for grant funding. The project for this is the Project 27 Rest Stomp. It's a stormwater abatement installation. This has been also going on for design for a couple of years now. Again, it's a state road, but we're going to have support on there from, from Assemblyman Thiel, Senator Plumb. We're working with the Friends of George Capon, the Village of East Hampton, the New York State DOT, the Friends of George Capon, the Peconic Land Trust, and the East Hampton Town Trustees. The application deadline is June 7th, so we'll have it probably going on, if not this week, not the first meeting in June. The maximum application request is $250,000. We're going to request that max on the 250. It's approximately about a $990,000 project for the Route 27 Rest Stomp down there, which we've, we've seen in the past. But that'd be a, a grant application that we will be applying for, but we'll have to go through resolutions. So I hope I have the board's support on that. With that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Kate?
Yes, thank you. First, I'd like to do a ditch planes update. We have received three, we had three responses to the RFP that we sent out for coastal engineering to work on the Dune restoration part of the project. We, the scoring and evaluation committee has met, and the next step, and evaluated the, the three proposals. The next step is meeting with all three. That will take place tomorrow for interviews, and hopefully there'll be decisions made on selection as soon as possible. And then I'll be doing another update on, on, once that plan comes in, what that looks like. And that's where the Dune restoration part of, of the project. For the Beach Nourishment Project, I've been talking to David about recreating the beach, the berm of the beach where everybody puts their blankets, and the lifeguard stands with the nourishment that we hope to have down out there second week in June. So that's where we are on that program. And Jason, if you will please, I'm going to show some slides from Montauk to Wayne Scott on the Litter Action Committee No Fling Spring Cleanup Day, which was delayed by a week. They had partners out here, it was CCOM, and here are some of the photos of all the folks that participated in the cleanup, and also the garbage they picked up. Jason, if you just want to roll through these, it was heavily, we had heavy participation and heavy cleanup of garbage along our beaches, along our roadways, et cetera. And I just want to thank all these folks who came out. This is Draw Drive Cleanup. Just want to thank everyone who came out, all the partner organizations for getting out there, Surf Riders participates, as I said, CCOM, all the CACs joined in the efforts, and, and many other organizations. So I just want to thank everybody for making it a very successful day. And just remember, please don't toss it out, don't trash East Hampton, and also reminding you that it's unlawful to litter, also in our town. So I want to thank that group. They have one more event scheduled as part of their No Fling Spring, and that's their dance party. And that's in partnership with the Springs Community Church. It's a fundraiser for the church that the Litter Action Committee participates in, and that'll be Friday, May 17th, from 6 to 9 p.m. It's a fun event. It's a big dance party. Everyone's invited. And this, the church is located in the heart of Springs, and there also will be a raffle. So I hope you can join and dance it out. The Wayne Scott CAC, as I did my abbreviation on my report last week, the Wayne Scott CAC met. And just starting off, their next meeting will be June 1st at the chapel in person with the Hard Stop at 11, so that everyone can join in the Pride Parade that Tom mentioned. We had an in-depth and a very informative presentation from Eric Schantz and the Department, Director of Housing, on the Route 114 project, the ADA projects. And he answered a lot of questions from the community, and took in some comments from the community as well. And it was a very, Eric is a wonderful person to have present and explain what's going on to folks, and I thank him for his Saturday time. Katie Casey was there as well. The other, the other concerns are, again, traffic calming, and Jose Arandia has the subcommittee, and they're trying to corral the best suggestions to send to the town board, and that's an ongoing process. And I, I think we'll be getting some recommendations from that committee in the very near future. Also, there was a discussion, a beginning discussion on the use of the South Fork when Wayne Scott Dedicated Fund, the first of which we have received, which is 2.75 million. And there was a very good discussion on where folks in Wayne Scott had to do outreach to the, the entire community, and where they would like to make recommendations, and that is, again, ongoing. The other item that they asked me to discuss is, and, and I'll segue into the fact that the town-wide ban on gas leaf blower use is, is coming up when that comes into effect. So for commercial landscapers, the use of gasoline or diesel-powered leaf blowers is banned between May 20th and September 20th. The use of any leaf blower on Sundays between May 20th and September 20th is banned. That includes electric. The use of gas or diesel-powered leaf blowers between September 21st and May 19th is only, well, I'll discuss that when that date rolls around. But the use of gasoline or diesel-powered walk-behind leaf blowers are banned on properties less than one acre. And the use of two or more leaf blowers of any power source on properties less than one acre is banned. And so I just want to get that out to the community that this is coming, we're, we're heading up to May 20th, so the gas-powered leaf blower ban will be coming into effect. If you see any use that is contrary to the code, please contact code enforcement. And that's all I have.
Great, thank you, Kate. Ian?
Yeah, Kate took a couple of my things. I was going to advertise the No Fling Spring Dance Party on Friday, but she beat me to it. And also wanted to talk about housing, which I'll do in a minute. But first, there is the Parsons Blacksmith Shop located near Ashwag Hall and Pussy's Pond in Springs. It's a really beautiful historic building. I don't know if people know this, but they have blacksmithing demonstrations. They did this last year. The first one this year will be on Saturday, May 18th, from 10 to 2 p.m. Mitch and James, there's a couple of blacksmiths who will be working there. And again, it's a, it's a beautiful historic structure, and there's a great group of volunteers helping to clean it up. And I hope the public can attend, and I'm looking forward to things to come at that, that, that area. That area there, the Springs Library, the Blacksmith Shop, Ashwag Hall, it's a really beautiful, beautiful spot. I mentioned this last time as well. I want to give another shout out to LTV, the work they do filming our meetings, the fact that we're having this meeting here, thanks to Jason and Britt, of course, on that. But also, LTV does a lot of, they're doing a lot of other work. And if you go to ltv.org, there's all sorts of programming happening there, you know, related to, to cultural activities, to, to government, but just, you know, plays and, and things like that. So I really encourage everybody to, it's a beautiful building, a lot of good things going on there, and I think there's something for everybody to, to appreciate. The last thing I wanted to talk about, which is sort of to piggyback off what Kate said about Eric. Eric is, is great. I'm the liaison to housing. The public has heard a lot from him. Recently, we talked about senior citizen density, and we sort of talked about maybe increasing density for affordable housing as well. Received a email from a member of the public about the comprehensive plan, I believe all of us did, and, and one thing stood out to me, which was Goal Four of our comprehensive plan, which is provide housing opportunities to help meet the needs of current year-round residents, their family members, and senior citizens, seasonal employees, public employees, emergency service volunteers, and other. emergency service volunteers, and other local workers. I know that everybody on this board is, you know, all hands on housing and everybody's been working hard on that. I just want to bring this up to the forefront of everybody's mind. You know, our comprehensive plan goes back to 2005, and I think that the challenges have gotten greater. You know, we're doing something about seniors as we demonstrated last time, or we're moving that forward. I really want to do more for affordable housing in general and recognize, you know, the unique nature of our workforce and emergency service people who are really struggling to find a place to live. So I just want to say that I welcome comments from the public and I hope we can have further board discussions with Eric Schantz, who's been, we've talked a lot about different ideas and is working very hard on all things housing and a real asset to the town.
Great. Thanks, Ian. So the Agricultural Advisory Committee met a few weeks ago and they discussed their membership. They're looking for representatives from equine and aquaculture. So if anyone knows, if anyone, please pass those names along. And we also need to replace the planning board liaison because Ian had filled that role. So we're asking the planning board to designate someone to be a liaison to the agricultural advisory committee. We also talked a little bit about acquisition, particularly of the farmland at the corner of Springs Fireplace Road, and that goes back into Acabonic that 20.5 acres that we had just acquired. Their comments was much of that soil is sandy, so if they were wanting to know if the town needed input from them as we put together an RFP. They also articulated their 2024 priorities. They want to continue to review site plan applications proposed on agricultural land, which has been ongoing. They'd like to review and make recommendations to the town when we purchase agricultural properties and we're looking for farmers. And lastly, they're looking to do an effort where they want to discuss updates to the site plan application process for agricultural properties and also to do like a quick go-to fact sheet because sometimes, you know, new farmers are handling the process on their own, they haven't hired attorneys. And so this could help navigate them through that process. I've also made a request, you know, we lease property to a number of local farmers in town. It would be nice if they came back on an annual basis and discussed, you know, and shared with the community what they're up to. The East Hampton Sec Harbor CAC met last week and we had representatives from Project Most make a presentation. While this application is before the planning board and not the town board, folks on the committee wish to be informed of the project and CAC members, everybody got to ask their questions so that they could have a better understanding of it. We also discussed the Springs Corridor Study, potholes on Stephen Hand's path, which I believe have already been repaired, and we discussed the current plans for the new senior center. We had a public, or the Suffolk County DPW came out last week and had a public information meeting regarding Three Mile Harbor. We know it is County Road 40. We had about 80 people in attendance. It was also thanks to LTV. It was, you know, on channel 22 and on YouTube in real time. Some of the goals that the DPW were looking to address was roadway resurfacing and pavement rehabilitation, to construct new curb and sidewalks on both sides of the roadway, providing continuous pedestrian facilities throughout that corridor, upgrading the existing pedestrian facilities to conform with ADA, install bike lanes on both sides of the road. And this is going from Springs Fireplace Road up to Copices. The county road ends at Copices. Repair and upgrade existing drainage system, traffic signal improvements at Cedar Street and Collins Avenue, replacement of traffic signage and pavement markings. They also talked portions of that road are 40 miles an hour. They are looking to reduce it to 35 miles per hour. But really, the major concern that was raised by the public has to do about public safety and in particular, the intersection of Three Mile Harbor and Springs Fireplace Road. If you know, if you're coming south on Springs Fireplace Road and you need to make that left onto North Main Street, it's, it's a challenge. It really backs up. Also, sightlines aren't great. So, and we have discussed, you know, our wish would be for that to be a roundabout, and that's what the county heard from the community, that they would like to see a roundabout there, that they were willing to postpone the project in an effort to see that be, you know, incorporated into the reconstruction. We know that it would require parkland alienation on the part of the town, and that is something that we are looking into. Our town administrator, Becky Hanson, is having conversations with Fred Thiel to see how we could move forward on that. So I think that that's something we all, you know, we've had discussions since that meeting last Wednesday, and that's something we would like to pursue. So, but currently, the project is in the, you know, preliminary engineering stage. They're looking to start it in 2017 and
2027.
2027, I'm sorry, and be done by spring of 2028. And I believe at this point, it's about a $14.6 million project. Just want to let folks know that later this week, that there's a rally for out in Hampton Bays at the Long Island Railroad at the train station. This is an effort underway to increase train service on the South Fork as our region is experiencing ongoing traffic challenges. We're finding, you know, folks, I mean, we just, our new public information officer, you know, the first day in, it took him four hours round trip to get here. So now he's on the railroad, but he, you know, Patrick gets in at 7:00 a.m. and leaves at 3:00 p.m. because there's not a train from Spion that gets him to work at nine o'clock. So, you know, it's a challenge. We can't live without our commuters, you know, as far as our town staff is concerned. And with, you know, our schools depend on it, our hospitals depend on it. And what we're looking to do is to get the MTA to put this project into their capital plan. They're going to be voting on that in October. So they've formed a South Fork Commuter Coalition. And, you know, it's going to be an ongoing effort between now and October to get the attention of the MTA and get them to understand how critical this is for us moving forward. So the Rally for the Rails is on Friday, May 17th at 3:45 at the Hampton Bay's train station. I know Kate and I are attending. Great, Tom. So we can take the train and it's the purpose of the time. We get off the train, we'll be joined by other elected officials and community leaders, and then there's a shuttle for us to get back to East Hampton. The other thing I wanted to mention, that ARF, our Animal Rescue of the Hamptons, is celebrating its 50th anniversary. They're kicking off the festivities this Saturday at ARF from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. with Pet Celebration Day. And we have been invited, if we want to go down and attend, they've asked us to be there at 11:30, and I'm kind of worried that I'm going to come back with a puppy.
Me too.
Although my family would love that. So that's what I have for my liaison report. I know we have a couple of resolutions to do.
Before we start resolutions, David, could I ask you, you have an amendment for a resolution that hasn't been adopted yet.
Correct.
Can you just read it all as one to be the 634 as amended and I'll change it so we don't have two in same day that will get confusing later on?
No problems.
Right, I shall start with a resolution 631. This is to amend budget accounts in resolutions 224, 621, and 224, 627.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make static all for resolution 2024, 632. This is appoint seasonal lifecars for May 2024, effective May 15th, 2024 to May 16th, 2024. Names, positions, pay scales below.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
633 is appoint seasonal employees in the recreational department. Trivia Miller and Rasier Odo, recreational aides. Ms. Miller, Trivia Miller will be starting May 14th, 2024. Mr. Odo will be May 16th, 2024.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to offer an amended resolution for 2024, 634. This to read whereas the town has been informed that emergency road repairs is needed on Lincoln Ave, Walton Street and Hawthorne Street, specifically the filling large potholes in the following areas. One, Hawthorne between Fort Pond and Broadway, two potholes. Two, Walton between Lincoln and Broadway. Three, Lincoln between Norfolk and Crandall. Four, Lincoln between Crandall and Walton. Five, Lincoln between Walton and Hawthorne. Whereas the town highway project inspector, Kevin Cobb, has been made aware of the potholes and has determined that a repair is needed. Therefore, it be resolved, the town board authorizes the highway department to make the necessary emergency repair to Lincoln Ave.
Second is amended?
It's more than Lincoln Ave though, so maybe we can just say the above mentioned roadways.
Repair to the above mentioned roadways.
Can I have a second as amended? And then I just want to just disclose that I live in that neighborhood. All in favor?
Aye.
635 is authorize payment to the Suffolk County Water Authority for a billing period from 2023. That'd be the amount of $1,817.84.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
636 is authorize payment to Bruce Peterson Incorporated to, for services for Four Hill Cemetery for $961 for an irrigation system.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I have resolution and I'm pleased to present this, resolution 2024, 637. This is a reclassification and promotion to Principal Environmental Analyst for Tyler Borsak. This is whereas the Suffolk County Department of Human Resources Personnel and Civil Service reviewed the duties and responsibilities of Tyler Borsak's Senior Environmental Analyst position in the Planning Department. And as a result of this review, it has been determined that the duties of this position are to be reclassified to the title of Principal Environmental Analyst. Resolve that Tyler Borsak be and here is appointed on a provisional basis to the full-time position of Principal Environmental Analyst, which is $91,099.01 annually for a 40-hour work week, and this is retroactive to May 9th, 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Tyler. And the next resolution is 2024, 638, reclassification and promotion to Principal Office Assistant for Carmen Chacho. And again, this is the Suffolk County Department of Human Resources Personnel and Civil Service reviewed the duties and responsibilities of Carmen Chacho Senior Office Assistant Position in the Ordnance of Force Department. And as a result of the review, it has been determined that the duties of the position are to be reclassified to the title of Principal Office Assistant. Resolve that Carmen Chacho be and is hereby appointed on a provisional basis to Principal Office Assistant, which is $70,222.46 annually for a 40-hour work week, and this is retroactive to April 26th, 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Carmen. And the next one is resolution 639, and this is the approval of Amagansett Farmers Market Special Event Permit. And this is whereas the town clerk's office received an application for a special event permit from Kate Plum, East End Farmers Market LLC, to hold the farmer's market on the grounds of Amagansett Square every Thursday beginning 5/16/24 and concluding on 9/5/24 between the hours of 2:30 p.m. and 5:30 p.m. Resolve that the town board hereby approves the East Hampton's Farmers Market LLC for special permit.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 640, I'm very pleased to offer this one in wholeheartedly support. This is to approve scholarships for the town's summer recreation program at Spring School 2024, to give students in financial need the ability to participate.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 2024, 641 is to appoint temporary office assistant in the Human Resources Department. Mrs. Julissa Garses is hereby appointed at the hourly rate of $23.10 for a 90-day period beginning May 13th, 2024. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
642 is a hearing officer appointment and John G. Callahan Esquire is appointed as the hearing officer in a disciplinary proceeding and is to submit findings and recommendations to the town board regarding the disciplinary charges. Financial impact is $4,000. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
643 is a budget modification for the town attorney's office, and we're moving $37,000 from full-time salaries to outside professional in the same amount. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
644 is to authorize a payment to Priority Dispatch for an outstanding past due invoice in the amount of $98. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
645 is to approve a payment to Gregory Schaefer and John Claflin for the town of East Hampton's PBA contract for services provided, for services pursuant to resolution 2024, 474, retroactive to 1-1, 2024. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
646 is to approve a settlement and budget modification for workers' compensation with a former employee. The town is obliged to front the settlement payment of $171,784, for which it will receive a total reimbursement from the excess carrier. And the budget office is to set up the necessary funding of the settlement payment as per the pre-funding invoice and subsequent reimbursement. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so I think that's it for today in Montauk. Do I have a motion for executive session?
Yes, I make a motion to go into executive session for CPF, personnel, litigation, potential litigation, and real estate.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. And again, thank you to Jason, Britt, and our IT team so that we could have a seamless meeting here today in Montauk.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jody.